Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. We give the floor to, and we'll say it's 6:02 PM. Gave some time for people to get settled. Councilman Parker, can you introduce this evening's invocation? Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. All right, let's have a moment of silence. We're going to read the names of those neighbors who have passed away since we last gathered. In memoriam, Rogelio Aguilera, Russ Anderson, Kenneth Backus, Don Bachelor, Paul Brininger, Karen Brinol Shadle, Irene Campbell Seer, Maria Cantu, Artiller Carlos, Shirley Cullum, Paul Denny, Yvonne Dennis, Helen Cruz De Forre, Mary Ann Dawson Eisenberg, Pauline Edwards, Teresa Garcia, Daniel Glover Jr., Charles Green, Saturnino Hernandez, Doll Jackson, Dan Kiesling, Dawn Kincaid, Minnie King, Mary Lonchart Tuber, Jeremy Mullen, Mildred Moon Hudson, Samuel New, Mary Norman, Elizabeth, excuse me, Eleanor Nowland, Stephen Owen, Anita Pinson, Deniqua Reed, Gloria Rousch, Jim Savage, Louis Schneider, A.C. Smith, Dex Smith, and his brother Dior Smith, Labertha Thompson Johnson, Rosie Tipton Howard, Mary Townsend Robinson, Emmanuel Velazquez, Richard Wilson, and Judith Wirick Lamb. Please join us as a community in their honor with a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call of council members. Clerk Holdley.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
McGinnis.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Quorum is established. All members are present in voting. Could I please have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. Any discussion on the motion, any amendments? Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
I'd like to add a discussion item after number 10 to discuss immigration and customs enforcement activity in Pontiac and questions around the Flock security camera system. All one item.
And is there a second for that?
That's the second.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford, that we add a discussion item which will become the new number 11, and then current 11 would become 12 accordingly regarding immigration and custom enforcement in Pontiac and the Flock camera system, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's the amendment before us. It would change the agenda to add that discussion. Any clarity or discussion on that proposed amendment? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on that proposed amendment.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment is adopted, and we are now at the agenda as amended. Any further discussion, any further amendments? Hearing none. Roll call, Clerk Holdley, on the agenda as amended.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is adopted, and we'll proceed accordingly. Where at approval of the consent agenda is there a motion to approve?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Here are the items in tonight's consent agenda. City Council Facility and Property Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of August 22nd, City Council's Special Meeting Minutes of August 26th, including closed session meeting minutes, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of August 26th, Resolution Honoring the Life and Service of Past City of Pontiac Employee Eleanor Nowland. She passed away at age 94 recently. She worked for, for her career for the city's municipal court, now today the 50th District Court, including as an administrator. So we thank her for her decades of service and honor her life. We also have a resolution honoring the life and service of past City of Pontiac employee A.C. Smith. Mr. Smith recently passed away at age 97. He served for 30 years on the city's engineering staff, and we honor his, his service to the community and his legacy. Resolution Recognizing September as Pace Month in the City of Pontiac. We have Pace Southeast Michigan has a facility in the City of Pontiac in District 1 on Gulf Drive, and we celebrate their role in the community and the work they do with our senior citizen neighbors. Resolution on Authorizing City Clerk to Publish Notice of Budget Amendment for the Fiscal Year 2526. It'll be on the agenda at the next City Council Meeting, September 30th. Resolution Supporting the Detroit Institute of Arts Mural Program Application for Downtown Pontiac, and Resolution Modifying the City of Pontiac Annual Fee Schedule for Nonprofit Special Exception Applications. Any items that need to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Holdley.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted, and those items are, are now enacted. All right, we are at special presentations. The first will be Kristin Wiltfang from Oakland County to help explain the Pontiac Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update Process. We, as a city, had a Parks and Recreation Master Plan that is currently active but will be coming to end of its natural life, and we want to proactively just refresh and update it so that way the city's in the best possible position to get that money, make those improvements, and enhance recreation and parks in the city of Pontiac. Mayor Grimal, anything further you need to offer for the administration?
No, other than this is obviously a really important process, and I'm eager to hear what Kristin Wiltfang has to share. And then I know we've got an item further down on the agenda to share a little bit about the process with the public.
Okay. And if you could turn on your microphone, it seems like some of the microphones might not be fully batteryed, so we're going to work through this together, but there's a button at the bottom right of the base.
Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Kristin Wiltfang. I'm with Oakland County in the Economic Development Department, and I was fortunate enough to work on the last five-year master plan for the city and just wanted to run through the process for you tonight as to the upcoming events and the process that we'll be taking going forward. So we do have several project partners that have been participating kind of in the background in gathering data and information during the discovery phase of this process. We've met with city administration, Councilwoman James. We also presented to the Park and Recreation and DPW Subcommittee. We've been working with the Park and Recreation Director, Mr. Price, and also with our friends at Oakland University, Oakland County Parks, and the Healthy Pontiac Weekend Coalition as well. Why do we need a five-year Park and Recreation Master Plan? That's a good question. So this document allows us to be eligible to apply for grant funding. It also helps us to coordinate Park and Recreation, the maintenance, the management, and the different activities and programming that happen at the parks as well. It also helps us to develop some goals, objectives, and action items that are still kind of pending items that need to happen in our parks as well. So we will be following the guidelines that the Department of Natural Resources puts forth, so that'll allow us to comply with those requirements. As I mentioned, we're in the discovery phase right now for much of the, the planning process itself, so we'll be reviewing previous plans. So these include previous Park and Recreation Master Plans, the current city master plan, the Clinton River Trail, and then some of the non-motorized complete streets activities that occurred in the past. We've also spent a lot of time updating GIS data, which allows us to make some maps and do a lot of the analysis work. So this is our current list. If you find errors on here, please stop by the town hall, and I'll mention that, and you can help us further refine this map. But you can see the city has quite a few parks, quite a few schools, and a lot of recreation areas as well. We will also be using the updated city council districts throughout the plan going forward since this will be adopted. So we'll use the updated districts. We'll also be including the park concept site plans that the public provided input on for the neighborhood parks. And Oakland University also completed a park amenity inventory. So this is an assessment of each of the amenities within each of the parks, and it also has a qualitative piece of this. So if it's good condition, fair condition, or poor condition, and it allows us to use that as a benchmark going forward so we can compare, are we making progress in the parks? We'll be using our updated 2025 aerial photos. We have updated park photos for each, each of the parks. And then we'll also be including the new recreation center, the new park that'll be downtown that's being planned as part of the county's move to downtown, the Murphy Park Expansion, and then the conversion issues that we've been working with the DNR on to correct some of the, the issues that we have in some of the parks where we use previous grant funding.
Do you want to, if you have the opportunity, to elaborate on that for what that means for some residents that might not be familiar?
We do. Yep, yep. So we've been working with the Department of Natural Resources to identify the property, the park properties that have previously had grants associated with them. So there are grant agreements that go along with those funds, and they're typically in perpetuity. So we can't sell parkland, we can't give easements, we can't remove park equipment without approval from the Department of Natural Resources. However, those, those did occur. Those, those issues did happen dating back to the 1960s. Some of those grants were in place, and it was just record-keeping that did not transfer from one administration to the next. And so we have put some safeguards in place, hopefully to identify those parks that have those encumbrances upon them. So we are working to mitigate that property. I mentioned the Murphy Park Expansion. We're hoping to utilize all of that new parkland to offset some of those parks that were either sold off or had, had other conversion issues. All right. So our next steps, as I mentioned, we've been doing a lot of the background work, but next Monday on the 15th at 6:00 PM, we'll be right back here at City Council Chambers, and we'll have a town hall related to this, so we'll go into a little bit more detail. We'll have some interactive activities as well for folks, so please stop by and join us. We're also working to analyze the data and the feedback that we received during public comments, and then we'll be drafting the Park and Recreation Master Plan and opening that up for public review and comment. We'll be back in front of City Council on December 16th to, to hold a public hearing, and then the final plan, if it's adopted, will be submitted to the DNR before the February 1st deadline. So again, I mentioned that town hall that's coming up on the 15th on Monday from 6:00 to 7:30, please join us. And then we also have an online survey. So here's a link to the survey, or you can scan the QR code with your phone. I also have printed copies here that I can leave on the back table if anybody would like to complete a hard copy as well. So with that, I will answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Councilwoman James, you've worked a great deal on the initial Parks and Recreation Master Plan some years ago and ensuring that we're doing this timely and proactive, and you chair our subcommittees. Are there any initial questions or comments you have on the matter?
Well, just that, I am very happy to see us getting this started in a timely manner. This is the first of the master plans in a number of years that we have seen the City of Pontiac actually do the update within the timeframe that it was due. So the last, the, the last city's master plan was overdue by at least a year. You know, it had been, it's expired for at least a year, but this Parks and Rec Master Plan will not expire. Our hope, if everything, if everything happens on schedule, we are scheduled to have a new master plan before the previous expires, which I think is just a tremendous thing for the city. It shows the progress that we're making in just being able to take care of business. So thank you for all your support and help, Kristin, and really looking forward to it.
Further questions or discussion? All right, with that, thank you very much, and a reminder, we have it on the agenda. All the community is encouraged and welcome here in person on September 15th, and if you can't make that one, the survey option is available to you as well. And if you need any assistance, you can contact city council offices or, or other parts of City Hall, but we welcome all that feedback. I took the survey. It does not take a long time, and there's a prop there about what you'd like to see in that new downtown park, that there will be a city park close to the Oakland County facilities that are being renovated and all that, and the former Phoenix Center site. Thank you for being here. Have a great rest of the night.
Thank you.
All right, our second and final special presentation from the state of Michigan. The administration has a proposal that council begin considering in terms of the city's income tax administration. Many of us residents know that we have an income tax, whether you live in the city or just work in the city, and that's been internally administered here at City Hall. The, and with that, I'll give it to the administration as we begin this consideration. These are representatives from the state of Michigan, so we intentionally have this earlier on the evening's agenda. We will begin deliberation later tonight. They are not required to stay for that, but we don't expect to act on this tonight. We expected our next city council meeting after the Subcommittee's been able to review it, community's been able to give feedback, so don't feel pressured, state of Michigan, to stay the whole night, although you're always welcome. Mayor Grimal, anything further?
Well, just to introduce the topic, as the city council president indicated, the city, as everyone here knows, has had a income tax for, a city income tax for a very long time, going back many decades. Regardless of the merits of whether or not cities should have income taxes, we have one. We've had one for a long time, and the city's budget is quite dependent on raising revenue in part through that mechanism. We want to try to improve both the rate of collections of income tax that's owed, but also reduce the administrative cost to the city of doing so, and we believe that this proposal will achieve both of those goals. And with that, I want to turn it over to our, I was going to introduce our Deputy Finance Director, Portia Prater, to then introduce our guests, and our, our Finance Director, Daniel Clark, as appropriate.
Good evening, council and administration. Thank you. You did such a great job introducing why we're interested in partnering with the state, so I was just going to hand it over to the state, but I will highlight a few of the reasons why the city is interested in partnering, partnering with the state. So we're asking, why is the city interested in partnering with the state of Michigan? So a few things, a few reasons. The current state of Pontiac's income tax department, I'm going to break that down. So the city operates a well-functioning income tax department with the annual cost of approximately $659,000. That's how much it takes for us to operate the city of income, the city of Pontiac's income tax department. And annual collections total roughly about $21 million, but Pontiac experiences approximately a $2 million loss each year due to the limited effort, I'm sorry, limited effort authority. As of 2024, total, total delinquent balance equals about $28 million between years 2024, 2004 and 2024. Another reason why anticipated benefits, the state of Michigan, we'll go through a couple of those, but the state will elaborate with the presentation that they have today. Enhanced services, error reduction, which is their built-in validation automated notice, and alerts, improved customer service, stronger enforcement and fraud, and fraud prevention and security. The stronger enforcement is important because currently, as the city, we don't have levy ability. So if someone owes an income tax, the city, all we can do is attempt to, you know, request that income tax revenue from the customer by letters and just request, but the state of Michigan, they have the ability to levy the state, their state refund, if there is one, available to cover the city's debt. And so that's one of the reasons why I think it's a good idea to go with the state, but I will turn it over to the state for them to give a little bit more in-depth information.
Thank you. My name is Anne Cram, and I'm here with Larry Burton, and we're very grateful to present. Currently, at the Michigan Department of Treasury, we have a city income tax bureau. There are 24 taxing cities across the state, and we offer this service to those cities. We have full administration services, is what, which is what we're looking at tonight for Pontiac, and we have a compliance service line as well. We are an experienced partner administering city income taxes. We have a large scope of services available to us, which makes this a nice partnership. Our goal is to strengthen Michigan cities because ultimately we want a strong state of Michigan. Stronger cities equals a stronger state. So for full administration, we have the end-to-end services. So as part of this annual cost, it handles everything from processing returns, the customer contact, and that includes multi-channel communications, compliance and auditing, which also ensures the fraud prevention, and collections. I have a breakdown on the bottom on the annual cost and what that entails. And then if you flip to the next page, here are some key facts. And Larry, feel free to chime in here. So we've administered currently for the city of Detroit since 2016, and a lot of this data is based off that. So in addition to the key facts seen on the screen, there's no, there will be no change to the tax rate when the city enters into a partnership. Paper returns are still allowed, however, we highly encourage electronic because it means faster refunds out the door for citizens. When it comes to compliance and collections, it's always a tough balance there, but our number one priority is education and outreach. So you can see in these key facts, 13% on average per month, we resolve before aging it over to enforcement actions, and that's through letter campaigns, phone calls, and just non-invasive actions where we're trying to educate. Portia touched on it. This is the stuff that you guys currently do. The, the added piece or added benefit that we have is, once those efforts are exhausted, that debt ages over into our collection enforcement actions, and we have the benefit of leveraging state refunds to offset those debts. And we also are involved in the federal TOP program. So for example, if there is a refund due and we have a city debt on that record, we will roll off, let's say it's a $50 debt that's owed, we'll roll off that automatically, and then the remaining balance will go out the door to the taxpayer. That is a seamless process. There are, of course, notifications that go out to the taxpayer before that happens, and there's also a time period for them to resolve that debt or dispute it, and in that case, that debt is put on hold until that is resolved. So we have those additional services and that we offer cities that we administer for. Our average speed to answer, so if taxpayers are calling, is four minutes or less. And Larry is over at our processing center. I don't know if you want to share some of that?
Yes, we have a call center that is dedicated strictly to taking the phone calls and also responding to taxpayers, so that's something that we're looking at every day, improving and making sure that we're under that four-minute mark. And also, hate to jump ahead, but correspondence, say for instance, a taxpayer doesn't agree with what we did or changes we've made, when they send correspondence, we'd like to get that also done within 60 days, and majority of it is done within 60 days within, within our current staff. But in terms of customer service with the new system that we're going to have, everything's going to be seamless, and taxpayers will be able to do a lot of things that they can do online, and that's going to, going to help out with speed of process and everything like that, so.
On average, 85% of our refunds are processed within seven to 14 days. That's an, an effort that, you know, our number one priority is customer excellence. We're constantly looking at production. So as part of this partnership, the city would be presented monthly metrics on production, revenue, to ensure that they're getting the ROI that, that they hope to receive out of this service. We have escalation paths for complaints, so if customers are, you know, have a concern about correspondence they're getting regarding taxes, there are, we have a call center that escalates those, and we have specialized staff to deal with any tax technical aspects that we need to dive into. In addition, some highlights on the benefits, self-service portal, combined filing, that is a big piece. One of the things that we like to talk about at Treasury, our vision is that one-stop-shop for taxpayers being able to file your state and your city at the same time. All of that is handled in one system. You log in, you can see that breakdown. If you are needing to get on a payment plan, you can self-service and put yourself on a payment plan that works for you. We have the ability to kind of remote in and assist taxpayers as well. If we agree to move forward with this partnership, the timeline is the build to establish the, the system or the infrastructure for the city of Pontiac. We would start that November 2026. It would wrap up November 2027 with a go-live January 1, 2028 for the administering the 2027 taxes. Pretty much how this works is we enter into an MOU with the cities that outlines a data-sharing agreement. We collaborate on communications and outreach to the city. We work with the city to ensure that we have the necessary data to build the system and get everything established. There's no conversion of historical data, which is a, a big deal when you're talking about standing up a city for taxes, and then we provide the city with monthly reports. Honestly, when I, when I talk to other cities about this, it's a, it's a win-win. The one-stop-shop for taxpayers, the added self-service, combined filing, multi-channel communications for taxpayers, and then for the city, the efficiencies gained, the decrease in overhead costs, tax dollars go right back into the community to help support essential services. So I'm sure there's questions.
All right. Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. What is the cost, what is the, the cost for the state actually assisting the city in this, this area?
There is, there is no cost to the state. We currently were awarded IT funds, ITIF is what it's referred to. Those funds are awarded for projects where it'll make, improve the lives of citizens with services. So those funds that we are awarded help fund the implementation of these projects. So it's $650,000 savings for the cities that, for Pontiac specifically. So the cost for Pontiac pays only for the year-over-year starting in 2027, that annual cost highlighted.
Could you give me that number? Because that screen is kind of hard to see.
Yeah, I put 100, I put the note at the bottom, is a mistype. Yeah, I put the note at the bottom is a mistype of 150. It's actually $650,000.
Okay. $650,000 a year? Thank you.
No, it's $650,000 in implementation costs. That's a savings to Pontiac.
Okay. And what is the annual cost?
The annual cost is $650,000. So, there's a $650,000 upfront that is a cost savings, because there's no cost to build the system and implement. The annual cost to the city is $650,000 a year.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
So, basically, the state is going to take over how we collect city taxes. Is that correct? Is that what we're seeing?
That's correct. So, we would take over everything from the front end of processing the returns, answering any customer service phone calls, whether that be phone calls, chat, email. We would take over the compliance functions and the collection functions.
So, the collections part is what I have an issue with, because sometimes the city sends out bills that are not accurate. So, does that mean y'all going backdate and go back and try to get money that isn't there?
When we take over administration in these types of partnerships, we do it moving forward. We don't go back and do any historical collections. We're specifically only allowed to collect on what we administer for. So, are any actions that we are administering for, so it'd be 2027 and forward, that?
And I guess my follow-up, you are aware that some people depend on their state tax refunds and how that's going to affect the people that we deal with, because some people who have children, that state and that tax is the only big means of income that's coming, so now we're going to take that from them too? I guess I should ask the Treasury, not you. Could you come to the mic, please, so you can make me understand this?
I will say that we're...
I know, I see her answer. Thank you.
So, your question is, can you repeat that for me?
So, what I'm saying is, we have families that depend on the state refund as well as the IRS refund. So, now y'all going to garnish them if they owe anything from the city before they can get their refund back? Because that's what the state does. If you owe something, they take it out, so that's what they're going to do, and we got to pay them $650,000 to do so?
So, in terms of the $650,000 annual cost that the city is going to be charging or that the contract will cost, we already incur a cost for operating the internal city of Pontiac. So, I'm just going to respond to that first. And like I said, it's approximately $659,000 for this tax year, because we have a contracting company that we contract with income tax, plus an income tax department where we pay salaries, benefits, and all that. So, that combined is approximately $659,000. So, with that, I can't really speak to, you know, how our families depend on, because I really don't know everybody's, you know, personal situation, but per the income tax director, state of Michigan, if a city debt is owed, that is money that is not being put back into the community. If a city income tax debt is owed, they have, they reserve the right to cure that debt by, you know, offsetting it with a state refund, if that is the case. But there is a time period where that individual will have the opportunity to cure it themselves. If not, the state does reserve the right to make us whole on that debt, to put those funds back into the community and increase revenue.
I will say, one of my peers that works with Larry and I says this so much more eloquently than I do, we are not looking to take money from families in need. We're very careful about looking at collections, at what's fair. Our mission is fair administration, so we're not, you know, we're looking at that AGI. We're also looking at, you know, the effort it takes with collecting certain debt. We are not, you know, out to put people at a hardship, but we're also looking at fair tax administration, education, and outreach. We do have payment plans available for folks to access, and there's options that are on there, but there's also custom options that people can choose from, just depending on their circumstances.
Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, brother president. I appreciate it.
I don't think your microphone is live, if you can use Councilwoman Jones.
As it probably needs to bring it closer. Okay, I think my question for the deputy treasurer, because as I'm hearing, you're saying that we want to go with the state to monitor it and manage it, so will there be a reduction in staff for the city employees?
Eventually, it would, but Ann could correct me if I'm wrong. There will be a period of time of approximately two years where we still would need a functioning income tax department.
So, we're going to pay for them to do it for two years, plus pay employees to do it for two years?
Potentially, however, there is an effort, and Ann can speak more to that. There is an effort for us to collect, if you want to speak to that, how we would collect what is deemed to be uncollectible for the previous couple of years and use that money to kind of like soften that or cushion that.
There's typically a wind-down period, because we can't, by statute, we can't collect on the historical years that we didn't administer for. We're only allowed within statute to collect on what we administer. So, the activities associated with years prior to 2027, the city would need to exhaust all efforts that they deem, you know, worthy on those to wind that down. That can look like many different things, just depending on the ROI. So, typically, we say about two years when we onboarded the city of Detroit, that's what that looked like.
Councilwoman Jones, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, Councilwoman James. Order in the chambers.
Okay, so you stated that this process, if it were approved, it would start January 2028, and this would not be retroactive for the years prior. This would only take into account that tax year. So, my question would be, what is your strategy for partnership on addressing, you know, some inaccuracies? You mentioned the department that you have for, what did you call it?
Phone calls?
No, the department for, you know, objecting to the tax bill, because what Councilwoman Rutherford said is actually correct. I mean, many residents do experience, and even myself included, have experienced inaccurate tax bills that we've received and working with, you know, the city's department to relieve those. Now, switching this into the next year, what would be your plan for, you know, continuing that partnership and addressing some of those inaccuracies, reducing, you know, the likelihood of that going forward? Is there a game plan for that?
I can let Larry speak to that, because he's daily oversees those types of calls that we get.
Yes, what we have is, excuse me, we have a department that actually looks over our stuff that we have, quality assurance, I should say. So, we're very careful when we do send out bills to make sure that they are accurate. Obviously, we are human, so there are going to be some discrepancies, but there also are challenges or ways to get through, to challenge your bill or challenge the decisions that we made through correspondence. So, we definitely, before we get to the billing part, there's definitely multiple channels that you go through to dispute whatever corrections that you have, and we're clear when we respond to these taxpayers exactly why they're being billed or why it is what it is. But we definitely have quality assurance in place to make sure that the mistakes that we do make are minimal.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. For a little bit of clarity on the idea of paying both the state and city employees, there is going to be a period of overlap where the state will be taking over collection of everything going forward. We would not need a full city staff at that time, because we would only be working on owed items. So, we will be working on collections and items where we are following up and sending out extra information, saying, hey, you didn't do this, you didn't do this, and trying to do those late collections, not the whole process of actually receiving people's income tax. So, it would not be $650,000 for the city and $650,000 for the state of Michigan. It would be $650,000 for the state of Michigan and some lower number for the city, which during the ramp-up period, we would be figuring out what the right mix would be.
On average, our overall collections rate on average is 75%. Of that 75% that we collect on, 80% of that successful income generated for the city is attributed to the offset program. There's additionally, since we partnered with Detroit, they've seen a 54% increase in tax revenue. Typically, when we look at our state data compared to city data for a city that has not entered into a partnership with us, we anticipate that there is a 10% increase in that first year of administration attributed to our streamlined administration, compliance, and collection activities.
Mayor Grimes, next on the speakers list, followed by Councilwoman James and Councilwoman Jones.
Yeah, I do just want to emphasize, and I probably should have done this at the outset, that there's nothing about this proposal that would increase the income tax rate or increase the amount of income tax that is owed to the city. So, it wouldn't change the income tax, the city income tax rate, or how much in city income tax is owed to the city. It's designed to try to improve compliance in terms of actual payment of the existing or future amounts owed. I also want to emphasize that, once the state were to actually start administering this, I believe that it would improve the accuracy of the city income taxes, that you'd actually have fewer mistakes in terms of the city income taxes that are levied or that are charged to people. So, I think, moving forward at least, it would reduce any administrative errors. And then, the other thing I want to emphasize is, we have situations now, and certainly city council is aware of these, where people come to the city and they want to contract with the city, and because we have a city ordinance that says that people have to be in compliance with city income tax and other things in order to get those contracts, it can put people in a tough position. And part of the challenge is that there are, we have plenty of residents who don't know that we even have a city income tax. We have plenty of residents who get really behind on their city income tax. This would help avoid some of those problems, because for the taxpayer, it would make it simpler in terms of how to pay city income tax as part of their state income tax, rather than to have to send a separate payment to the city and have to deal with two different entities. So, I actually think one of the important elements to this is that it actually makes it easier for city residents to pay their taxes and to comply with city requirements, because they don't have two different entities to have to deal with, and they're not going to fall further and further behind on the taxes that they owe.
Councilwoman James.
Yeah, I've got two questions. First, if you could just kind of go through the sequence for the levy, I guess I'm trying to understand when the levy would kick in in terms of, you know, when the taxes are due for the city. What steps do your organization take up to the point where you would have the ability to do a levy? So, how many steps would the residents have before that would take place? That's my first question.
Yes, the first step is a bill, meaning they'll get a bill from us just saying, hey, you owe. And then, from there, there's a timeframe on there, it's about 60 days, I believe, for that. And then, after that, there's no response. Then, it goes to our collections division in our area when we try to collect and contact the taxpayer. By the time we get to the end, to where we're actually levying, we've exhausted all things, and they also have rights too. So, we have to work within those appeal rights as well. I don't have those in front of me, but there are appeal rights that go in place too, to where they can appeal it, that we would also handle as well. But by the time we get to the levy status, we're at probably a year before we're even at that status, and there's been several letters sent and things like that. And then, when they get that bill, there's also going to be an opportunity to set up a payment arrangement online or through our phone system. So, they'll have several opportunities before we get to the levy. We're not just in the business of making, you know, citizens' lives hard and just go right to levying. There's several steps before we get there, because it also costs us to actually do the levy. So, that's not something that we want to do, and like I said, it's way out to where we do that. So, we give several opportunities for taxpayers to become compliant.
So, they can enter into a payment agreement. Once the bill is sent out, that's the first step, they are given the opportunity to set up a payment plan.
Absolutely. There'll be a QR code on there that they can scan on their phone, they can go online and set it up. It's very convenient, so they'll be able to do that and pick the amount of the payment that they want to make per month.
Okay, and my second question is, the $650,000 that you said was the implementation cost, and does that mean that you have, it's like when you're renting an apartment, you're paying a deposit and you're paying for the rent? So, would this, with the implementation for the first year, would that include the $650 for the implementation and another $650 for the cost of the contract itself?
So, think about, I'm trying to think of a good analogy, but the $650 in implementation, the state covers that with our ITIF project funds. We have project funds that are awarded for various projects across different state agencies that will improve the lives of citizens and improve service delivery. My bureau is in the business of improving citizens' lives in these income taxing cities, the 24 cities. So, we got this bucket awarded to us to help with onboarding additional cities into these partnerships. So, that's the benefit that we're bringing to the table. Instead of you going out and getting a new software provider and paying that cost to build it out, we are assisting with that. So, we are covering the $650,000 to implement. The only cost that the city is incurring is just the maintenance, the licensing that's outlined right here, just the year-over-year cost, starting at that go-live date.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that that helps.
Yes, yes, it does.
Councilwoman Jones, followed by Councilwoman Parker.
Okay, it could just be that, I can't see this, but you're saying that the, you know, the cost from the city would be these, what is that, 650?
The total, the 450 plus the 200, so $650,000 a year.
Okay, but my other question, my follow-up, is this on? My follow-up question to my previous statement, you and the mayor both said that this process is expected to improve the accuracy and reduce errors in generating, you know, income tax preparation. But I just don't understand where that comes in. What about, you know, what you're proposing is different from what we already have in place? How does this reduce the accuracy if a resident is to dispute, you know, their income tax bill? What about this reduces error?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, that's...
Taxes are complicated. I, you know, personally, my background is not taxes. I come from a continuous improvement background. So, in plain terms, with this system, as the taxpayer is entering their tax information, the system is helping them. It's providing instructions in each of the field boxes and also saying, hey, this is what this means, this is what we're looking for. We help build that language so that it's in, I would call, the 7-Eleven. Anybody walking in a 7-Eleven can understand what's being asked there. So, that's the first step, is like you're not alone in it. Additionally, there's a support button in the system that you can ask for support, and it dials in Larry's team, and they can remote in and see the screen that the taxpayer's on and assist them further as they're filling out that form. So, that's the first thing to help, like, the efficiency of it, reduce errors. The second piece of it is, when, in previous years, when we have issued tax bills, it's not a breakdown. It says you owe like $100, but it doesn't break it down super clear on penalty and interest, if there's like a fine associated with that or anything. So, in this system, when you log in, you know, Ann Cram, I can log in and I can see, okay, this was my tax due in 2027. I missed that. This is the penalty. This is the interest I incurred by the year. So, you can see that detailed breakdown, so that it's very clear what it is you're looking at as you move forward into that process as well, if that is a stage that you end up in.
The error reduction is woven into the algorithm of the software, in other words.
Yes.
I understand.
And also, our staff, I want to say that we also have experience. Our staff has been processing city of Detroit returns for quite some time, so they have experience, and when it has to be manually reviewed, they have experience with processing returns and doing it correctly, because they have the background. And again, the customer service area, we're strictly dedicated to taking the phone calls, processing the returns, and ensuring that they're accurate and timely. So, we do have checks and balances in place to make sure that this is happening for the citizens.
Thank you, sir. That's all.
Councilwoman Parker, followed by Pro-Tim. Councilwoman Parker, followed by Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President. My question, is this a one-time fee, or does it happen every year?
The, the $650, $650,000 a year is an annual cost.
Annual cost, okay. And?
It's less, yeah. I think according to this resolution, you currently pay $659,000 a year.
Okay, so you're just saving me $9,000, based on my math. Okay. My next question. What do we do with the people? You mentioned that you, first off, if somebody is delinquent, there's interest charge, right?
At a certain point in time, yes.
Having done this before, and I know they said I've been late, so I've paid interest. So I'm aware that there is interest charge. So how do we account for that? And then, my third question is, you talked about a QR code that everybody would have to fill out, or should be filling out.
It's an, it's an option.
It's an option.
Yeah.
What do we, so what do we do with the people that don't have the ability to do QR codes?
We will always have traditional options. We will always have a phone center. We always have the paper option, paper correspondence. We have email. And through the self-service portal, you don't have to use the QR code. It's a convenience option.
So, and my last question. So for those of us in Pontiac, and you were talking about you're going to be, I'm sure, move, operating out of Detroit, correct? Or you're going to have office here?
We are currently housed in the Diamonddale location. We, it's your outside Lansing, sorry.
So if, if we do go with you, then will they still be able to come to City Hall and work out some of those problems that, that you are supposed to be handling?
That is something that we can talk about, certainly.
Because I'm sure a lot of people can't get to Lansing or wherever your, your office is.
Yeah. When we went live with Detroit, there's obviously a period where there's a transition period. Our goal is to have staff close to the locations that we partner with. We typically don't open up a boots-on-the-ground office in the cities that we partner with. Our operations are mainly done through call center. We don't have, for example, in Detroit, we don't have a state, a city income tax bureau staff located in the city of Detroit. However, we do want to, our goal here is to customize our services to fit the needs of the city. So if that is a need, we can certainly talk about that.
But that would also be an additional cost?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, we can talk about it.
Pro Tem Carrington is next on the speakers.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Deputy Prater, can you come to the podium, please? I just want to ask you a few more questions. So what's, what's the projection of income tax loss to the city per year?
I believe I provided a, a report in all of the packets for council, but I believe it's approximately $2 million a year that, the, that revenue that we lose annually.
Could you email us the report? Because I don't have it. I know, I think President McGinnis has it, but I haven't seen it. So could you email us that, please?
Yeah. And I just want to clarify, the, we currently pay $659,000. That is what this fiscal year budget is for income tax. As we know, budgets typically increase, they don't decrease. So while the state is, their cost will be $650,000, our cost to operate the income tax department will most likely, you know, increase annually. So I just want to put that out there. Yes, there will be approximate $9,000 cost savings, but the potential revenue increase would be in the upwards of approximately $2 million. We haven't done those actual numbers yet, but that is a project that the state is moving forward, will move forward to do for us once we, you know, make the decision to enter into an MOU.
Yeah, thank you.
And, colleagues, you have them in your packets, but they're with the resolution portion on the agenda, which is after public comment. So it's later in your packets. But since other colleagues have asked their questions, I'll dive into mine really quick. It states that you provide these services for Wayne County in a tailored approach. What particular approach will you be onboarding for Wayne County? What services will the division be providing?
For Wayne County, we were in discussion for a, and there, it was a small tax that's on stadia tax, that they were interested in our partnership with. Just last week, they decided, because that tax is up for vote, that they were going to pause that effort at this time. So that was a discussion that we had ongoing with them through the summer. We're currently administering for Detroit. Flint is on-boarded in 2027, and we have a couple other cities that we're in discussions with.
I see in, in the materials you provide, an example of the city of Lansing. They're a city that has an income tax. They're not utilizing you currently. So they do it in-house, or they contract out?
They do it in-house, and I mocked that up as an example for that slide. Like, I just used that, because we're in Lansing, so I used them.
No, that's fine. I just want to get it as a frame of reference, because there's 24 cities. We are one of those 24. One of those cities has been doing it through the state for about a decade. Order in the chambers, order in the chambers. You can have conversations in the hallway, if you'd like. That, had, you indicated the amount of money that's increased for collection response rates from the city of Detroit. What's the window, time, opportunity for Pontiac or other municipalities to become in the pipeline, in the queue? My understanding is that you're not sort of saying, come one, come all, of the 22 remaining cities. It's a matter of sort of limited capacity. You have to get in line.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't, our first and foremost is customer excellence. We don't want to overwhelm our own staff and our own operations with onboarding, you know, 20 cities at once. We typically know, we typically onboard if we, we know that we can onboard two cities at a time. So for 2028, for example, if Pontiac were to say, hey, you know, we're interested, we'll sign, we want to sign the MOU, that, we would only onboard one other city with Pontiac.
What's our window of time to make the cut?
Um, I'm not going to put, you know, undue pressure on y'all, but we want to, in order to like have enough time to do the build, to do the data analysis, we need a good year and a half to do that. We need to, the build on the timeline starts November of 2027. We like to look at the current data to know, you know, how to set up operations for that. I would say a year and a half is a safe.
So I use TurboTax to file taxes. Please don't judge me, neighbors. So I use TurboTax to file taxes. I can file electronically with the federal government, file electronically with the state. TurboTax will generate my Pontiac City Income Tax Report, but I still got to mail it, you know, hard copy and facilitate it. If you were facilitating those services, does that then allow it to be electronically filed through third-party who have?
Yes.
A large portion of the tax preparation market in Michigan and in Pontiac. And unfortunately, that doesn't look like it'll change, because the federal government is regressing with what they're allowing to do it for free, filing for free. So what should a resident expect in terms of ease of use? Would there be any efficiencies improved?
Yeah, the, you mentioned TurboTax. That will be an option that you just mentioned. You'll be able to do that. But we also will offer a free file, meaning the same questions they're asking on TurboTax, City of Pontiac would have that same type of deal, where they do it for free, based on a certain parameter, to just do their city return. So that'll be an option for the citizens as well. So they don't have, if they want to do their Pontiac-only return, go to our website. It'll be a link to go there, and they'll be able to do the same type of thing that they do on TurboTax directly to, to, to the city.
Part of what I'm getting at is, should somebody use a third-party provider? There's clunkiness with how we do the Pontiac part, just because it's not automated, it's not allowed to be electronically filed. Does your system allow for the city of Detroit's income tax to be electronically filed?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the work that your division does with major employers, ensuring that they're automatically taking, you know, or anticipating that city income tax? I'm sure for Detroit, it might be a little more straightforward. It's larger. You've got some major employers. But let's say, for example, United Wholesale Mortgage, does your division, that's our city's largest employer, most of them don't live in the city, but they still would be required in theory to pay an income tax. I'm not certain if UWM is already sort of handling that internally, but I know companies have been able to in the past. I worked for a company, they collected it already for me. What's the scoop with your division for Detroit businesses or, or people that are working for a major employer, and they've got a Pontiac address?
I think for, for that, we'll be more so compliance, I mean, and outreach, to, to let them know what's coming down the pipeline and for them to become compliant. And then, you mentioned the people that, that work for the city sometimes and don't. The compliance unit will be able to determine who's in the city and who's not, based on some of the resources that we have available.
Employers can file withhold, like withholding for employees. We do, we do, you know, withholding administration for employers. I, I'm not sure the exact question, are you asking more from a compliance standpoint, or how they would file?
If your operations interface with businesses to get them on board with doing that, or if that, it isn't part of the suite of activities?
Business tax is part of suite, suite activities, but it wouldn't be anything different than what they're already doing.
Okay. All right. So we have a resolution later on the agenda. I expect that council members will postpone it until our next city council meeting for further research and review. At that time, I'm also going to ask for a motion from colleagues to suspend the rules, so that way we could take up a resolution asking for some specific year-over-year data about income tax collection, lost, you know, or non-collected, recouped income tax revenue for the last decade or so, in advance of our next Finance and Personnel Subcommittee meeting. So I'm sure the administration's happy to provide that. It's, it's just running the process, but so that way we've got it on the books. Is there any final questions for the representatives from the state of Michigan? Thank you for making the time. We recognize that the admin, that the administration is interested in this proposal. So it's not like the state's here trying to say, you better do this or else. It's, they're here because it's a possible solution to some challenges. But we've got to do our due diligence to see if it's a right fit for our community at this time, because depending on what your grant funding is, it, it may be an opportunity in a future year, or it may not, depending on how the world evolves.
Yeah, I mean, no one knows what will happen with budget mon, project money specifically. I want to make sure that the funds are secured for the city of Pontiac, you know, if we have them right now. However, we don't want to necessarily push you prematurely into a decision. And any follow-up questions you have, you can send over, and we'll get you some data on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no final questions, that concludes our second and final special presentation. We are now at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Dr. Digra Waterman.
I'll start out with a comment about the master plan for Parks and Rec. Yes, the last one we did was delayed because of COVID. Minister James, just so you know why that was, you know, the last two years of my administration, we were fighting COVID. So a couple things got pushed back. But that's just data that I have, and I have a wellspring of information, I guess. And so I said, people still come to me for facts and figures that I have accumulated over the years and for that advice. In fact, as I was sitting with somebody sometime, they said, well, you know, well, mayor, they still come to you for that information, because you realize that you are the only mayor who stayed in Pontiac, who's still here. And I thought about it, and we started recounting, and we said, yeah, they're either dead, or in some cases, they just left Pontiac to go on to other places, you know, Rena Pachus, whatever. Mayor Dukowski, who immediately preceded me, I know he's still in the area, just not in Pontiac, because I run into him at Home Depot. And current mayor, you know, I know, Mayor Grimes, I understand, is running for office over in Macomb County, so he's not likely to be with us too much longer. So I stand here as your mayor emerita, a very rare product here in the city of Pontiac, a mayor who is here still taking care and being involved in Pontiac. And speaking of mayors, we had the results of the primary election, and we have our two mayoral candidates here for consideration. And we got a voluminous lot, a lot of information and ads from during the primary. And one of the things that brought to my attention was that there was, for the two candidates, different support mechanisms here. And for you, President McGinnis, I see that our dear post-congresswoman, Brenda Lawrence, is steadily endorsing it. She certainly is a, is a titan in terms of the women leadership in the state. And whereas Kermit Williams, I have a picture of some of his literature, and we have Matty Hatchett, one of the last of the old timers, who was very much involved in Pontiac politics and, and well-being. Matty Hatchett, she's sitting here putting on one of the Kermit Williams T-shirts. So as I'm considering this kind of contest going into the general election, I'm thinking, well, this is almost like a cage fight between two denizens and titans of women leadership. So that's interesting. So how do you make a decision? One of the ways is to realize that you can compare on the basis of two offices that they each held. Kermit Williams held the office of President of the City Council, and Mike McGinnis has been President of the City Council. So you can see whose style and whose.
That does conclude your time.
Are the ones that are more deserving.
Well, thank you, Dr. Waterman.
Yes.
It's Efrain Ortiz.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Robert Bass, President of Citizen District, Community Citizen District Council. We are here to address the M1 Concord Noah's Ordinance Letter Agreement. We strongly object to the council's passage of the document and the way that you attempted to just ease it by residents unchecked. There is not enough time to go through the document line by line. This agreement only benefits four parties: M1, Council President, Councilwoman for District 1, the, their acoustics engineer, and the lawyers. To be clear, this agreement does not help community, the community or the residents. In short, it locks us into an agreement that stops them from having, having to address our complaints and concerns regarding noise during their operational hours. Under this, under the authority of this city and this letter and the event permit, they don't have to entertain our complaints. Terms. This letter agreement shall be fully enforced and effective after the effective date, and shall remain in force unless, until and until the parties execute a written amendment or terminate, termination of this letter agreement. This denies us the right to use future right, this denies us the future rights to complain about the noise, because it is not going away, or take legal action. What this is, is a soft contract, locking residents into something that they disagree with. We've been down here more than enough times with more than enough people to make you understand. We don't want the excessive noise. We have sick people over there. We have people with, with various degrees of mental illness. And this bothers, the noise bothers them. And it's also a danger to our health, because the burning rubber and all of that stuff, when you magnetize it the way you're trying to do it, then, then you're basically killing us, because you're putting it all in the air. And we've shown you that. We told you that. And you fail to understand that we, we are the arbiters of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Louise Osorio, if I'm pronouncing that right?
Good afternoon, Mayor, audience, people at home, city council members. Thank you for this opportunity. Last weekend, item was added to the city council agenda within the last 15 minutes before the meeting was adjourned and was passed. before the meeting was adjourned and was passed by a three-to-four vote. This resolution causes great concern to residents whose well-being has been affected by noise from M1. The resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a private agreement with M1 regarding the noise. Some of the most troubling provisions of this letter of operation with which the mayor is to execute with M1, in my opinion, are, one, it's a private agreement that applies only to M1. So that allows them to be excused from having to follow the noise ordinances that everybody else has to follow. The changes in this resolution are how noise will be measured. It changes how noise will be measured. And the threshold for issuing citations appear not to benefit the citizens, but to offer virtually no protection for residents from high-decibel sounds from M1. Let me share with you how it works. Within a 20-minute interval, the three highest decibel readings will be averaged. From that average, the ambient sound of the neighborhood will be subtracted, and they've decided that the ambient sound in the neighborhood is 50 decibels. So you simply subtract that ambient sound from whatever you measured, the average of what you measured, and that's the sound that's attributed to M1. So if a resident is in their yard and they hear an average of 92 decibels, that's measured by code enforcement, and the ambient 50 decibels will be subtracted from 92. Do the math. You would, 50 from 92 is 42. So instead of being cited for exceeding the noise ordinance of 61 decibels by 31 decibels, they are way under. They're only 42, and that's legal. It may be legal, but it's not legal for the residents listening to it. Another troubling issue is that the resolution leaves residents at the mercy of car enthusiasts racing around the track at M1, generating high decibels. Sounds from the racetrack would have to exceed 110 decibels. That's the sound of a siren.
Ms. Northcross, that concludes your public comment.
Okay, Chris Northcross, Pontiac, Michigan. Hello, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council. Look, the human ear, when exposed to noise levels above 100 decibels, is susceptible to damage. Damage right now, not over a 20-minute period, is used to establish an average that's stated in that agreement, but right now. The negotiated M1 resolution concerning allowable noise level legitimizes maximum levels higher than 111 decibels. Higher than 111 decibels. That's ridiculous. I say higher because averages are used in establishing both the ambient and the maximum. Above 100 decibels, the ear may be damaged. At 111 decibels, ear damage is certain right now. Remember, the human ear is damaged by maximum intensity, not some average, maximum. You go over maximum, boom, you messed up the ear. The ordinance is using averages, which says an average reading may include some very high reading, a very high reading, and then a number of very low readings. That high reading can be very dangerous, and the ordinance does not protect against that. The sound level now permissible by this ordinance is unthinkable. It benefits M1. It almost seems as though noise is being weaponized to clear out the residents around M1. Now, the M1 agreement says to me that we, the residents of the city of Pontiac, have been had, we've been hoodwinked, we've been bamboozled. And I think you really need to look back at this agreement, go through the basic physics, the basic math on it, understand that we need to protect our residents against a maximum level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Northcross. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
I pass.
Ms. Marcia Rogers. Andrea Mans.
Good afternoon, council executive and city clerk. I want to piggyback on the NORC crosses. I live in District 1, and I've already said I got to move. I just had new windows put in my home. This is disturbing to all of us residents in District 1. As you see, we were in District 1. They moved into our area, okay? Now they want us to abide by their rules. Is this the Indians and the white man again? Just come and run us out? But that's not what I came here for, but I wanted to give my opinion. I wanted to come here today to thank the council and who helped the retirees get as far as they have on this getting our money back, our $400, and the retroactive retirees. Please come to the court hearing on September the 17th at 1:00. You don't come to city council, I don't know if I'm gonna see you there or not. But I want to talk to you about a problem that I'm having with the city of Pontiac Public Works, the facility. Now, you're asking for $12 million for a facility for DPW. Let me tell you a story of mine. Put a pin in that city of Public Works. On July the 8th, a cable company came into my yard, well, between the sidewalk and the curve, which is belonged to the city, to dig a area to put in optic fibers. When they did this, I asked them, I said, "Do you have a permit?" They let me know that this was not my property, that this property belonged to the city. However, I had to upkeep it. I called DPW, talked to Andrew. He told me I'd get in touch with them because, see, when they did this, they dug up dirt and left a pile of dirt all up and down our neighborhood. Called DPW, they say they have no control over this cable company. Now, how can you let somebody come in the city of Pontiac and establish, putting in optic fibers, tearing up the grass, and you have no control? I've been calling them since July, DPW. And today, I called Larry, I called DPW Andrew. None of them can give me an answer. All they tell me is, "We'll give them a call because we have no control." First, they told me they didn't have a permit. Then, three hours later, they came up with a permit to do this work. It's amazing how this happens all the time. But this is what I wanted to talk to the city about. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamika Ramsey Brown, and I am the new executive director of Oakland Forward. I say new, I've been in this position for about two months, I think. Oakland Forward is doing its fourth warrant clinic. We work with Black Voters Matter. We've worked with them for the last four years. They provide funding for us, and we provide food and childcare and back-end support. The 50th District Court Chief Judge Walker and Judge Bowie do an amazing job at bringing their court administration into the Bowen Center, into community, so that people who have warrants, I know a little bit about that, can turn themselves in without going to jail, getting appointments and getting sometimes their fines erased, but helping them to get themselves together. We are excited that we have this opportunity. We have 43 people registered who have over 115 warrants between the 43 people. All of these people are people who got warrants in Pontiac. This is only for the 50th District Court. And so I just wanted to, one, come up here and pre-thank the Bowen Center. Deborah has been amazing, Chief Judge Walker and Judge Bowie to Oakland Forward, and all of our staff. But just to let people know that there are people in the community doing some amazing things. I also wanted to say that my business, T. Ramsey &amp; Associates, turned 10 years old last week. A black woman-owned business over the last 10 years has made $1.8 million. We've helped over 600, I'm sorry, we've helped provide over 650 hours of technical assistance training. Thank you. Thank you. And we've done a lot of this at no charge to Pontiac residents. Listen, I'm in therapy. Everybody should go. And I was like, why am I angry all the time? And my therapist was like, you know, some people just have that spirit. I fight for our community because my daddy is buried at that cemetery. My family came from Mississippi to Pontiac for a better life, and I will be damned if we don't get it. And so I am working hard to do that. So if I upset some of y'all up there, you know, oh, well, do your job, and maybe I wouldn't. I just want to say that this city, I had never thought about M1 trying to push people out, push people out of their neighborhoods. Can you imagine? The South Side is the oldest side of black people we have, and y'all allowed this to happen, and y'all should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Kermit Williams.
Long time no see. Delana Stevens with D. House of Angels. I've done some research over the last few weeks, and I could tell you that the domestic violence cases is rising. Over the last week and a half, we had 10 women get killed due to domestic violence because they didn't have nowhere to go. So I'm asking y'all, what are y'all gonna do? It's getting heavy out here. Like, right now, I have seven women who are fleeing abuse and have nowhere to go. The shelters is full. People funding and getting pulled. This community need help. Even struggling with my own personal matters right now, I'm still the boots on the ground even though I haven't been here down to this council meeting because I feel like I'm begging, asking y'all to help because one organization can't do it. Haven can't do it by themselves. Lighthouse can't do it by themselves. Then you got to go to Detroit. I don't have to send people all the way up past the McNair Bridge because there's no help out here. I also wanted to come and talk about, I'm proud to say, even with my own issues that I have going on, that I just received a donation over $50,000 in merchandise to support the community with clothing and household items. So I just came out today to seek support from the community. I'm looking for a space. I got a space donated to me in Detroit, but I'd rather do it here where I reside and with this community if I could get the help without being targeted or anything like that. Other than that, I'll just take everything to Detroit because, like, since I've been here, I feel like, and I'm be very transparent, I feel like I don't get as much support out here. It feel like it's like crab in a bucket mentality, and I have to fight with different organizations, different politicians, and things like that just to get my voice heard. So it's frustrating. And I thank those that have been supporting me in this community despite everything that's been said or people slandering my name or slandering my organization. I rebuke you in the name of Jesus. So I'm standing here, asking for the community. Most know, I canceled the meeting for October the 4th and the one for November, just to give myself time to think because I see a lot of snakes in my garden, and I need to clear it out. So until then, I'll put everything on hold, but I'm asking for support because I don't want to have to take all this stuff to Detroit.
Thank you.
The average race car sound is 100 to 135 decibels, equal to a small airplane or helicopter taking off. This is from the Grail Magazine, April 29, 2025 article. How loud is a NASCAR race car in decibels? If the car is that loud, they're that loud. It's not the city what you say, it's not going to go lower. The M1 Concourse Resolution Operation Agreement, which was not on the agenda of the last council meeting, and the member introduced this at the very end of the meeting, the member was Melina Jones, District 2, gave no real details. It was pushed along by Mike McGinnis, District 6, now running for mayor. They along voted for the person that's voted out of the council, William Parker, and Melanie Rutherford, the District 1, her own district, voted for this. Remember those names? This was sneaky, backstabbing, and deceiving. No one here was here to object, and it was close to 11 o'clock at night when they voted on this. I knew something was wrong because Kathleen was, "Oh, this is wrong." Michael didn't vote on it, and William carried and refused to vote on this resolution. This is the one, I asked you to do two things. One is to vote out Melanie Rutherford, and the other is to send Mike McGinnis packing. In District 2, you know what to do. Hand Melana a loss. One, you cannot enjoy, do not enjoy constant noise. Also, they came in here with saying, when they first came, "It's going to be parked in garage where people have parties, nothing by the track." I was at that meeting. And order says, the NORC says, this ordinance shall not be applicable to M1 concourse under a special event permit. Aren't they all special events? Any outstanding civil infraction previous issue to M1 concourse while operated as a special permit shall be dismissed. While M1 concourse is not operated, it's up to the city and the M1 concourse to determine the sound level and shall be updated by requesting party, and it must pay for the third-party engineering firm to do the management around the premier of the party, and then when the track is not, when the track is in use, it's only for 20 minutes. M1 shall keep an escrow account for all violations within 365 days. $500 for the first offense plus enforcement cost, $750 for the second plus enforcement cost, $1,000 for the third plus enforcement for the fourth, $1,500. Oh, y'all like money, huh? Okay, so this is one, sue M1 and the council, Rutherford, McGinnis, Jones, and Parker for voting for this. This agreement raises a fuller effect until they terminated. So just tell these people I just named goodbye.
That concludes your time.
And please, Pontiac, don't give them your votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckley. Mr. Brent Reynolds?
Good evening, I'll try to keep things rolling. My favorite hashtag these days is #VoteThemOutPontiac. Vote them out Pontiac. So that's a hashtag, use it, find it. We have real information about what's going on. I'm going to start with something good for a change. The Lions Club, one of Oakland County's oldest service organizations chartered in our city, is still alive. They're fighting to keep alive. We just did bingo. We had to do it in Waterford, but we did bingo. And we want to invite other nonprofits to get in touch and find out how you can do the same thing to raise funds for your organization. So this is a call out to people like Tracy So this is a call out to like, people like Tracy Hearst. You know, we have phenomenal people, Delana. There are phenomenal people here that can group together and raise money and have fun, but we have to go to Waterford to do it, like a lot of things. We don't have, you know, I don't know what the ordinances here that prevents us from doing this, but we're doing it in Waterford. So that was, and the other thing I want to say, the Bodat Park event was off the chain. It was truly the first event I've been to in eight years that looked like the Pontiac I grew up in. It was wonderful. The people were wonderful. The openness, the love, it was phenomenal. Power to the Pontiac people. We bumped this, we talked, it was great. Now to not so positive. District One was hopping on Sunday. Sunday was, you know, the epicenter of, you know, white privilege and power in Pontiac was at the Pontiac Transportation Museum. I was so busy, you couldn't park. You had to park on the grass. Now imagine that. If you park on the grass, you get a ticket, Pontiac. But at this fine event, and I have pictures of all the cars on the grass, there was not one ticket given. We also called the Oakland County Sheriff to have them do a drive-by, and knowing full well that it's a code enforcement issue, not a sheriff issue. But we wanted confirmation of the privilege for Mr. Mike McGinnis that has been going on since 2012. So my next hashtag is "Don't Be Fooled Again, Pontiac." These deals were made between Greml, as people like to call him here, Grimal, and McGinnis, and Bauer, and a bunch of people made a plan. And this plan, I, it was revealed to me in 2014, that Mr. McGinnis planned to do this, this, and this to become mayor. And we have all the paperwork, we have everything you want. You just have to get in touch, we'll happily share it with you. So I think those are my things. Oh, I got twenty-two sections, twenty-two seconds. Well, I'm not gonna waste them. I'll come back for agenda address. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Pastor Johnny Clements?
Hello, folks. My name's Pastor Johnny Clements, Pastor Bethel Tabernacle Church, Baldwin, thirteen forty-eight Baldwin. I started attending there before President Kennedy was shot. About fourteen years old, you do the math, I'm about seventy-seven years old now. A lot has changed around the old church. You can go down the corner and buy marijuana, and gamble anywhere. But there's a liquor store next door to the church, and I'd like to know how it happened. I don't, I don't, forgive me if I'm not doing the right protocol. All I know to do is come to the city meeting here. But last time this came up with the previous owner of Dollar Store, my wife and I came to the meeting, and we said, we were, we preached against drunkenness, and we got people drink their booze and leave the trash in our churchyard for years. But now it's happened where, you know, there's a black paper, brown paper bag with the empty beer can in it, and somebody's sitting on the corner of the church there, drinking whiskey, and I don't know how it happened. We got a regulation that no liquor store within five hundred feet of the church, churches. Well, it's only, it's not even a hundred feet. You know, maybe sixty feet, fifty feet. I mean, what we need now is another liquor store. Pardon me, I don't mean to get excited. But you know, that church is real special to me. I found Jesus Christ as my Lord there. We do the best we can. We're not very big. We're small. We're not very fancy. We're really kind of, don't look too good. Sometimes need a coat of paint. But it's still where we worship. And I didn't get no notice. Maybe they'd have sent me a certified letter. But something strange happened. For two weeks, the church didn't receive any mail, because we get it at our residence, because we don't have a mailbox at the church. Used to have a slot in the door, and we changed the door. So we've been getting the mail for years at home. All of a sudden, we didn't get no mail, until we saw a box of churches' checks laying outside on the patio in front of the front door. I went to the post office, said, what's going on? They said, well, you need to sign another change of address. Man, we've been getting the church mail to the house for years. But okay, I did it. But I'd still like to know, I'd still like to know why I didn't get a notice. We'd have been here. And God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. The name is Mark, is it Markzine? And please forgive me for pronouncing that wrong.
It's Maya Jean.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. I came here, this is actually my first time, and I am from District Six, a citizen of Pontiac for the past seventeen years. I'm coming here to talk about my husband being deported, and with the ICE raid of what happened on July 30th, which we thought intended to be an interview, that we got from a letter from the ICE Immigration Office in Detroit. And knowing that I went there, I became a single mother in two hours. I'm raising four young children alone after my husband's been deported, being expedited without due process. My children are all born here with a U.S. citizen, and they deserve stability, safety, and care. Knowing that I became a mother, a single mother overnight in two hours, everything hit me all at one time. And my family have lived here for years. We came here as seeking asylum, and we did come here legally. And my husband deported on August 11th, without me tracking him down, knowing from transporting from Northlake Facility, from three days there to Texas to Louisiana. It was a good chase. And we've been living in Christ since he's been gone. Even within the first week of school, I had nobody to pick up my kids. I'm a working mother. I even work at a school for it. And knowing that I don't have transportation, and I rely on their father to pick up my kids every day, I have them stay home alone, because I don't have nobody to watch them. Either I stay home and work, and stay home with my kids, or I either go work so they can have a living, pay my bills. And it feels like, it's just, I'm just, I don't know how I do it. It's impossible. It's being, my kids are traumatized. My youngest one does not know where his dad is. He asks me every night, mommy, when daddy coming home? I don't know. He went with you, where is he? I don't know. I don't want to tell him, because he's too, he's too young to even be traumatized. My son, who is ten, refuses to talk about his father's situation, knowing that it was being put out from Fox News with the worst of the worst being known as criminals to be deported, to even to a country that he doesn't, he doesn't even, he was not even born there. He's not, he don't know the language. He's not born there. He's never lived there, never stepped foot there. And I'm coming to ask for support, resources, leadership from city officials. I'm a part of this community. We need compassion and not punishment from this. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my community, because nobody wants to come forward. Nobody wants to speak upon this.
Ms. Mike, I don't want to cut you off, but you do have a time, time limit. Thank you so much. Mr. Marcus Bowman?
Good evening, good evening, good evening. So I'm not gonna talk about the obvious, the elephant in the room, because I don't like talking about people behind their back. But we all know the article that came out in Detroit News about, all the nonprofits don't have the capacity to take care of our crime with our youth in this community. Now, I'm not surprised by the statement. Doesn't surprise me at all. The man got three and a half months left here before he's gone. Why would he care? But what I am disturbed about is this young lady, Delana Stevens, that just left and said she got fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment. We got a hundred and seventy-four nonprofits, and she can't find no help to get rid of it? So I'm tired of everybody again. We don't have no solutions. We come up here with division and problems, division and problems. In this past damn time that we get to the program of coming up with solutions, a hundred and seventy-four nonprofits. How's about we leveraging all these nonprofits by working together collaboratively and going to the federal government for half a billion dollars to solve our problems? Workforce development, some of our road issues, our crime with our youth. But no, nobody's coming up with solutions. We're only dividing each other. This is not gonna work. It don't work in other communities. Trust me, if you come in other communities with divisive measures, they gonna put your head on a stake. So we gotta understand how to move forward and not think rigid like we used to think rigid in the past eight to twelve years, might as well say. Times have to change. Methods have to change. We can't keep coming up here throwing darts, especially throwing darts at Tim. Tim don't care no more. So, Mike, I'm asking you, once we move forward in January sixth, whoever it may be, let's take an initiative to bring all of these nonprofits together, so that a way we can figure out a way to ask the federal government, not the state, not the county, for some real money. Knock on Donald Trump's door and say, hey, this is what we need. But at the end of the day, if we gonna keep arguing, if we gonna stay divisive, if we're not gonna come together and figure this out, because fifty thousand dollars worth of supplies, I'm sure I'll figure out a way to get it to the people in this community that need it. But we're not leveraging none of our relationships. We still mad about stuff that happened twenty, thirty years ago for some of us. Some of us mad because we lost the race. Hey, I lost the race, twice. I'm here, still. I want to be here. And I'm getting sick and tired of the people that don't want to be here saying, oh, I'm tired of being compla, well, you signed up for it. So let's get to the business of taking care of our community, however that may look. Like I said, I'm all in with this community, and I'm gonna stay all in with this community. But what I, I won't tolerate, is I won't tolerate disrespect, and I won't tolerate divisive measures. We have to figure out a way to work together. And as always, God bless you all, and God bless Pontiac. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Pastor Kathy Deserol?
I have several things tonight, mostly questions. But in the beginning, I would like to thank Contour Windows, our new company in District Five, current District Five, who have done the cleanest, neatest, most incredible teardown I have ever seen in all my years in working with political situations. If you have not seen their preparation for that land and the teardown, you've missed something amazing, because they are just fantastic. I hope their product is as good as their, as their work is. Want to thank the DPW. The patchwork on Walton this time has been really helpful. And even on Pike, we've still got places, but they were caverns, and they've done an amiable job to make it drivable. I seem to remember about seven years ago, when we started with the Galloway Parks change and buildings, we should have had that park by now. We have the money. We have the plan. And we're still waiting for the building to be torn down. More or less, build the park. What is the problem? I know we're District Five. I know we're North End. We don't matter. But we do matter, and there are children out there that need that park, and it's time to get something going. There's a rumor around that the golf course has been taken off, off the sale market, the market. Is that true? Because we kind of need to know that. The MLK Bridge may dash to lose. Not only did I hear it myself, but my son from New Hampshire called me about it, that we were the only state in the nation, and I don't know if the statistics are true, I'm only telling you what was said, that we were the only state in the nation that had a direct route to a hospital that has been closed, closed now for at least three years. Boy, that's, that's the kind of publicity we want. Thank you to the railroad repair people. They've done a great job in a really record amount of time. And I know firsthand, because I got lost in there the other night at ten thirty. I forgot about it, turned onto the road, and then there I was. And I'm telling you, it's dark in there at night, and I ended up in Great Lakes Crossing. I had to come back down. I could not find my way out of that subdivision. So I, for one, will be very happy to see Walton open up again. For all the thank yous, I do have a complaint. Sick to death of this election. And if you think I'm sick of it, you ought to listen to the people. The lies, the lies, the lies. You've got to stop lying about each other and start doing something.
Pastor Kathy, that concludes your, your monologue time. Thank you. Beatrice, Ms. Beatrice Wright? Ms. Gloria Miller is on deck.
I came, good evening, council, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Rare. I came up here to talk about other things, but there's been so much talked about this evening that I don't know what federal government you're talking about as far as nonprofits, but our federal government is, is not doing anything for the people. So I just need to get that point out. The golf course, I didn't want to talk about the golf course. I played golf today. The golf course has changed their tune. They're, they're still for sale, but instead of asking six point three million dollars for a property he paid five, he paid five hundred thousand dollars for, now it's down to four some, some million dollars. Still too much for what he, he bought that land for. He bought that land for the price of five of our homes in there. He got the whole golf course, all the golf carts, three buildings, and an immaculate golf course that he put a little money into. I won't say that he didn't. I want to thank the council, because I too went to one of your Thursday night, the last Thursday night jazz concert, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I want to use the last part of my time to say that the M-1 concourse is totally disrespectful to this, this, I'm gonna say two things, is disrespectful to this community. Me and my neighbor were out on a Sunday morning. Neither of us went to church, but we were in our yards at church service time, and all we could hear was "nye, nye, nye." And there had to be ten churches within that sound. I stood there and thought, that is so disrespectful to our community. All these churches in session, and that's what we hear. Finally, let me just say something positive about something I'm involved with. I'm involved with a program called Midnight Golf. I'd like to talk briefly to Pontiac Senior High School seniors. Pontiac, schools of choice, it doesn't matter, you're in Pontiac. Please go online to Midnight Golf, which is a wonderful program that talks about college, career, and beyond, and teaches you how to play golf at the same time. Takes you on a college tour at the end of this year, gives you a set of brand-new golf clubs, and has a closing ceremony where we give thousands of dollars in scholarships. My section of Midnight Golf gave over a hundred thousand dollars in scholarships alone. With that, I want to say good evening to my Aunt Estelle Marshall, who asked me to come down and speak because I had not been seen in so long. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Gloria Miller? Ms. Charlotte Jones is on deck. Well, Charlotte Jones is on deck.
I'm sorry, City of Pontiac, I don't come down with good news all the time, but I have to talk to you up here, because that's how I get things out to you, what's going on in the city. So unfortunately, there's not a lot great going on when you walking every day, and you see the people, how they reacting, what's going on in the city. First, I want to say this. What does it profit a man to gain the world and to lose his soul? I thought about that when I, when I heard about what happened with M-1. We had preachers up there to vote for people, that you knew they've been coming down here for years and saying they got pushed. Oh, my God. God is real, y'all. He's not playing. That's why when I come up here, I pray about it. Believe it or not, I know I got passion, but my passion is because I love my people so much. I know how they being played. I know how they being I know how they being played. And Mayor, I read that article, I wouldn't have known about it to me, but you know, I look at y'all, but I don't talk because I stay in my place. But I'm gonna speak for y'all. Look, how you gonna bring a change? You get these young people out and vote. We got it. I got it, I'm all right, I'm good. But the future is you guys. You gotta go out there and tell them that we gotta make a change, we gotta clear this mess out up here. Bottom line. And just don't give Mr. McGinnis no, no pass. No, you don't. Mayor talked about, anybody wanna see these articles in Detroit Free Press last Friday, September the third? The mayor trashed Pontiac. He trashed the nonprofits in this city. I sat there and watched all the comments. Mayor, read some of those comments, you need to read some of them, it's pretty rough. And you know what? It's not what you do, Mayor, it's how you do it. You see, they're mad at you, how you talked about them, and that's how you felt underneath. But see, God is good because see, what you do in the dark comes to the light. And everything that, what they got to understand, that's why I'm standing here, I want them to hear me, all of you, all of Pontiac, the mayor did this to you, this is what he really thought of you. But think about it, think about it. Ninety-five percent of what the mayor wanted, Mr. McGinnis wanted it too. Don't separate the two, Pontiac, don't separate the two. Because, because it's true. If you don't believe me, pull the freaking records from the clerk's office. I never seen a record with ninety-five, ninety-seven percent a council approval for administration. That mean that Patrice, everybody got along lali, lali, da. That's not reality because we work for different people in district, districts, and we all don't agree, but we agreed to do what we have to do. What we seeing in this city of Pontiac, we are being gentrified by M1 and we see people been bought and paid for. And I'm bad enough to say it, anybody wanna beat my butt, let's roll. Let's roll. I'm tired of the bull.
That, that conclusion? All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. Charlotte Jones?
I'm Charlotte Jones and I'm here to represent Bishop Lee, New Birth International Church. She couldn't be with us this evening, she had an event that was very important. So, but what I would like to say is that, think, I'd like to thank all the council people and everybody, the mayor and the community for what you did for us last year. The Warmness Center and New Birth International Church, it was wonderful. And we did it because of you all and we thank you for that. But this year, we're doing it again, hopefully, everything is in the works and we're looking to have thirty-eight beds. This year, we're going to have families, women and children. So I, I understand what the young lady was saying, there's not place, a lot of places for women and their children to go. There is places for a lot of men, single people, but this year we doing the women and children and I'm very excited about that. But I'm here also to report to you some things that we did because the City of Pontiac asked us to do it. There's lots of things we've already did, but I'm just gonna name a few. We, we, we used to be a Zone One, but now we are Zone Two. And we have our poster up where you can see it. We also have our blueprint with the seal. They asked us about a blueprint with the seal and we have that. We asked for a, you asked us for a plot plan and we're working on that. We have an engineer that's working with us to get that. There's lots of things that we have did that I can't name here today for the building, to get it ready, the money that we have paid out and money that we, the finances to make this happen. But however, we are asking for help. We have spent so, so much to make this happen. We are in need of occupancy, occupancy. And we're asking if you could eliminate the funds or help us in some way to get our occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Darlene Clark?
Good afternoon, Council and Administration and the mayor as well. First, I got two things to address, so let me address the elephant in the room that a lot of people here has already addressed, but I'm gonna put it kind of bluntly. Ms. Jones, what you did at the last council meeting was a disrespect to District One. But District One, Melanie Rufford allowed you to do that. So when she allow you to disrespect her, she disrespect District One. I say this very sincerely, you step out of your elements. District Two is your district, you cannot speak for another district. You chose that voluntarily thinking you were doing the right thing. But the sad part about it, Ms. Rufford voted for it as well. You, and I would say this sincerely, I'm a very person who very frank, you ruined your reputation by voting and putting that resolution in. You hit the odds about you getting back into your district, the odds for that is not in your favor. Now, let me get back to the business at hand. Detroit has six thousand, I mean, six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred people. They have, out of that six hundred and forty-five thousand, they have four hundred, four, I mean, four, oh, shoot, I'm tight-tonguing today. Four, four, I can't believe this, I can't even say it because it's so high. They have four hundred and eighty-eight thousand people that are black, a round figure, four hundred and eighty-nine, seventy-seven to seventy-nine percent black. Flint has seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five. They have forty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven blacks, which gives you a fifty percent, point seven percent black. Pontiac have sixty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight. Of that, of that, we have twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-four blacks, which is a forty-seven point one to forty-nine percent black. I say this before, to you because every person, business person come to this podium has pointed out that they're doing this what Detroit does or what Flint does. This is Pontiac. When will be leaders instead of followers? You allow people to come to this podium and says, well, oh, Detroit do it, is that your incentive to agree to what they're saying is right? Because a lot of the things that they're saying is not in, in the best interest of Pontiac, is in their best interest. Based on that information, as black people, you have segregated along with the business people that come in here to tell us that we so poor and pathetic that we need help. When you council is supposed to be on the, our side, whether we black, white, yellow, or green, you decide to allow business people and you should, if you have a meeting with them prior, you should exclude the fact that we are not in comparison with no city.
I have two public comments that were sent in. The first is from Charles Blackwell. Hello, I want the following public comment read at tomorrow's City Council meeting. Good evening. For Halloween next month, Mayor Grummel should be a clown since he's already a clown. The next public comment is from Ms. Joyce Hawkins. The mayor, Tim Grummel, to the chair, Mike McGinnis, and to all those council members, I would like to say that I'm very disappointed in the council and the city of Pontiac. I was born and raised in a city on the south side of Pontiac and all of the years that I have been associated with this city. I have never seen such a display of a lack of compassion from leadership, especially the office of mayor. We have had some terrible mayors in the seat, Tim Grummel, but none as low as you are. We have lived through drug-addicted leaders, swindler, liars, and everything that you can imagine, but you, Tim Grummel, have surpassed them all. I have never known a city of Pontiac to set steel and allow senior citizens to die at the capacity that these council members have set, silent and done very little to involve themselves in the matter. Tim Grummel, you played every deceitful game, but what you did not take into consideration is that there is still a God that says high and looks low and judges the unrighteousness of man. In the book of Isaiah, ten, one through four, God says, woe unto them that decree unrighteousness, decree unrighteous decrees and that right grievances which they have prescribed. To turn aside the needy from judgment and to take away the right from the poor of my people, that wethers may be their prey and that they may rob the fatherless. In what you do in the day of visitation and in dissolution which shall come from fair, from fire, to whom will you flee for help and where will you leave your glory? Without me, they shall bow down under the prisoners and they shall fall under the slain. For all this has angered, is not turned away, but his hand is stretched out still. God is a righteous judge and no man will be able to sidestep his will or his judgment. The Lord is seated on his throne and he's going to judge the evil that this council and mayor has allowed to fall upon senior citizens in the city of Pontiac. I am happy that there is an agreement of settlement for the retirees and I pray that Judge, District Judge David Lawson will find in favor of the terms of the agreement that has been presented to him and settled this matter as quickly as possible. We have over a hundred retired employees die without receiving the money that is rightfully theirs. It was on the backs of the retirees of Pontiac General Hospital that bailed Pontiac out of the mess that they were in. I pray that Judge Lawson will bring a close to this nightmare and give the retirees the money that they work for so that as a son goes down or a senior and they slip away in the arms of the Lord, those that still remaining will get the opportunity to take a breath of fresh air, not worry about their food or their medicine, our whatever the need is. Sincerely yours, Ms. Joyce Hawkins. President McGinnis, that concludes a public comment.
Thank you. We are at a recognition of elected officials, are there any current elected officials? Oops, hold up on recognition of elected officials, a resident believes that they were overlooked.
Ms. Marie Thomas? Okay, please forgive me, I checked you before I called you.
I think you did call it, but.
I did?
Yeah, it was early.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. For those at home and those are here, I said to those at home, take five seconds, look at this chamber, see what you see, it should be jam-packed, not even standing room. We, the residents, ask you, this administration, for help to make the city a better place to work, live for ourselves and our family. Things we ask you for are the same things this administration takes and uses against the residents. You lied to attain your seats and have the nerves to say that you work for us. It's been said that M1 owned this administration. With the action this administration taken to prove the noise level, after residents said no, what other deals have or were being made in the name of the residents? Those deals that benefit your pocket. And by the way, when do another council tell another council what's good for their district? On in the city of Pontiac, can a clown show like this of administration exist? What? You went into a closed-door meeting and came out thinking it's okay to step on those that are hungry, homeless, sick, and jobless, for the almighty dollar.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
There's a man, a woman in the back row, do you believe your name was missed?
No, actually, she signed her own list, but we, she's the first time she's been here. No, come up, Tracy Long, or Long. Yeah.
Hi, I've never come before, you guys, like I say. Good evening to everybody. I don't know where to go from here. Okay, so I have a business in Pontiac, my parents opened it, they bought it in seventy-nine, opened it in eighty, and I know my councilman's been doing his best to try to figure out, where do I go? They don't want me jacking up cars anymore, outside. Yes, Terry's tires, you're correct. So I'm at a, I, I didn't even wanna come here to address it, but Paul, I've been leaving messages and Paul's not getting back with me. I'm, I'm at a stand, so I don't know what to do. So I'm just here to make sure that I'm heard, but I really don't know what I'm asking. Yes, I wanted to, I wanna do what my parents did. I, I had my kid, I went into labor changing a tire. I, that's all I know is tires. I am, thank you. I, I, sometimes, not as much anymore.
We're gonna have a little order. You still have the microphone, you have two minutes if you wanna.
I really don't have anything else to say, it's just, I don't, I'm not leaving Pontiac. I don't know what I'm gonna do at this point, but I don't anticipate on leaving. I mean, my parents built this, this legacy for my child. Yes, my child's not there right now, yes, he's in the military, yes, he will come back as soon as he's done with that service. But I, I do anticipate on planning on staying in the city of Pontiac. I do not wanna move.
All right, thank you.
No, I got big, right?
President McGinnis, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Pro Tem, for working to facilitate that. Any recognition of elected officials, those that wanna give an update on their roles? I do also wanna acknowledge that previously we had multiple school board trustees with us, the Honorable Kenyatta Bowman and the Honorable Shaquana Davis Smith. Recognition of public officials.
Renee Beckley, precinct delegate, precinct twelve, Michigan Democratic Party. I'm gonna talk about voting, sorry, Kim, I'm gonna make you work. Okay, there are three ways to vote in Pontiac. Absentee, early vote, and polls on Election Day. Absentee ballots are coming out towards the end of this month, I believe that's the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth is Thursday, I got from Oakland, the Michigan website. Okay, so if you moved or your precinct changed or something, sometimes that gets confused. If you don't know how to fill out your ballot, please call two four eight, seven five eight, thirty-two hundred. They cannot tell you how to vote, but they can tell you how to vote, like, oh, US Mark one here, one there, then for the library board, there's six you could charge, but you can't vote over six, you vote under six, but you can't vote over six. All the others are categories of one. Okay, then the early vote is usually nine days before the general election, that is in October, about last week of October. So I'm not sure what date because they haven't released that yet, but I will be back with that. Poll vote. Now, what's confusion is, these precincts have changed, so that's what's mainly one of the causes with confusion that, I think it was the Salvation Army and people didn't get to vote. Please call two four eight, seven five eight, thirty-two hundred, that's the Pontiac City Clerk's Office. On Election Day, they are busy, that's why you should early vote. But keep calling them, where do I vote? Also, the supervisor at the polling place, it used to be that way, now I don't know if they changed, should call City Hall to find out where the person that's in the wrong place votes. You have the right to vote. Don't let no one turn you away. Also, I'm gonna ask, you're not Mr. Dog Camp, but send that thing out, that, with all the voting and with that magazine that always comes on time for everything else, at least two weeks before the polls open and the early vote, so people will know and you won't get slammed with these phone calls. I'm gonna give this number again, Pontiac City Clerk number, two four eight, seven five eight, thirty-two hundred. I will get more information, I get my straight from the state of Michigan site, so I will read that on air, so there will not be any confusion, and you vote for who you think could lead this city. I already made my choice, if you know me. So, that's called two four eight, seven five eight, thirty-two hundred, City Clerk's Office once again, two four eight, seven five eight, thirty-two hundred. Find out where you vote, how to vote, when does voting start? If you have a trouble, if you moved or something, change your address, because you just gonna come back and don't mail those ballots the weekend before the election, because it'll get here Thursday. Thank you.
Any final recognition of elected officials? Hearing on, we're at Agenda Address, Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Dr. Deidre Waterman, items C and A.
Not currently in the chambers.
Okay. Mr. Robert Bass, what items? I'm saying, was that B or D? I'm sorry, sir.
B.
B, okay, thank you.
I hope I got it right.
I hope I got it right. Again, my name is Robert Bass, 499 Highland, Pontiac, Michigan. Council, CDC President. We'd like to share our concerns about B, the closed session regarding the M1 Concourse. We have continuously, over the last three and a half years, told this council that you are violating the Open Meetings Act. Yet you continue to do so. Council Pro Tem Carrington, when the M1 document was passed after last closed session, with no discussion, nor proper notice to the public of the contents that was, that was, that was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. We'd like to thank the three council members for their support with no vote, with the no vote. This has been a challenge for us in District 1 for some time. The fight is not over. We want to thank Council President McGinnis and Councilwoman Rutherford for violating our trust, the oath of office, violating the Constitution, the Civil Rights Act, and dereliction of duty. You have shown us that you took an oath to support us by districts and by the city. But nothing that you've done in the past three and a half years has supported us. You ostracized us from being a part of the process by not allowing us to be on committees and stuff. You've decided that you run the districts. We have no real input when we are leaders of the district, not you. You're a councilperson. You're supposed to look to us to see what we need, what our desires are, and support us when we come to you. But what you did was got in office, slammed the door, and told us you just don't give a damn about the residents. You just think about what's going in your pocket or what's in your best interest. And that's from Robert L. Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Mr. Kermit Williams? Ms. Tamika Ramsey, what items?
Special presentation, B, in Public Communications.
Thank you.
So for the State of Michigan Income Tax Administration proposal, as someone who owed back taxes and paid them, I think that if the state took it over, maybe they would keep people's business private, because somebody started talking all about my tax business and made it very public. Be accurate, because there are times where things go out wrong, but more than anything, pay people, because the city of Pontiac still owes, now y'all be coming for us when we owe y'all. Y'all owe people like money, $800. I mean, if you owe somebody $10, if it's their money they needed, are y'all giving people interest on the money that y'all owed them and y'all haven't paid them back? Once again, I am going to say out loud that public communications was not a thing until this election. I like it. I think this is amazing. I just wish y'all would do this all the time. But L, Community Benefits Ordinance Research. I work with, at the time, state rep and then attorney Rashida Talib at Sugar Law in Detroit. They had a whole convening about community benefit agreements and did a training. Have y'all reached out to those people? Detroit People's Platform and Sugar Law in Detroit did it in Detroit. And you know what they did? They talked to the residents to ask them what they wanted out of the community benefit agreements. Now, this might sound new to some of y'all, but actually talking to the residents who elected y'all would be amazing to see what they needed. Now, Dr. Waterman was trying to do the community benefit agreements, trying to get her pockets fat. So we just trying to see now who trying to get their pockets fat now, because y'all should be asking, having town halls, but I feel like maybe this gonna be like the redistricting, like y'all gonna do what y'all want to do and then tell us about it later, like y'all did with the redistricting two times. So I just want to make sure that we are talking to the residents. Y'all got elected, hired by people to be their voice, and now y'all sitting up there not being the voice for anybody. And if anybody want to know what Trump's America looks like in Pontiac, this is exactly what it looks like. Keep looking at that board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Renee Beckley?
Agenda Address.
Checkmate, Tamika. Okay, letter K, Michael McGinnis, did you put this on here? Because this is this about the demolition of the former Mark Twain School at 729 Linda Vista this fall season. I live over there, nobody got to know this. I got called by my future supervisor, my supervisor now, that this was happening. Hint, hint. I mean, and then the new president of the Planning Commission, I like her, it was change Ramona, oh, thank God, she gone, was saying, this not a complete report. You don't even, why do you need four bays? Why are you doing? She even know? And then, I don't know, the little younger white man, I don't know his name, Hanley or something, what's his name, Saffa H. But anyway, he was confused. Chris was asking questions back and forth, and Chris Jackson, I mean, he was clear and precise. But why are you, why are they pushing this? I thought these people were gone. We don't want this. We don't want no, it's a fabrication plant, y'all, in the neighborhood, surrounded by houses. Mark Twain School, they gonna tear it down and put a fabrication plant in the middle of the neighborhood. We've been asked it for maybe a decade, maybe a farmer's market if they clean up the mess, because we don't want the rats running around in there. We've been asked it, y'all do what y'all want to do, but you don't want to do what the residents want to do. That's why that, half of that council's gonna get wiped out this election season. This kind of stuff. Remember, Michael McGinnis is on the Finance Committee, so he knows where the money's going. Okay, that's probably what's going on with the income tax. He's also on the Planning Commission, very dangerous. He's like them pirates, land, land, gold, gold. Every time you see a vacant build, it's always something pushing. You know, in a black neighborhood, white neighborhood, remember Washington School District 2, y'all love him, but y'all got Washington School? God know what they gonna put in Washington School. That's larger than Mark Twain's area, I think. I'm not sure, you know? So, I mean, we're surrounded by houses. I don't want no fabrication plant in my neighborhood, okay? I've been there since I was five years old. I'm from District 1. That's why I'm passionate about M1 concourse originally. I've been in District 6, which is now 5. But y'all quit this, put this stuff that people don't want in the neighborhood. I bet you they went to other cities and got rejected, but they counted Pontiac with the trash. And y'all sap their trash, because it makes some money, because y'all put some dollars in y'all pocket, because you get $6,000. Somebody pay you for your future campaigns or whatever. Melanie Hides, her, God knows what she got. So, I mean, quit bringing this, and you put this on here, that wasn't even decided, because the report wasn't complete, and your colleagues were confused. It's not gonna be hard, that will have to sue you. We will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckley. Mr. Brent Reynolds, what items?
Agenda B, Special Presentations, B, H, Public Communications, Oprah, 7, 8. So, let's see what I get through.
All right. First of all, we are all just wondering about these closed special meeting minutes. We never see them. We don't know what is said verbatim. We used to have court reporter-style minutes of meetings that were kept for review for a year. That has disappeared with this council. Used to be able to go back and see who said what, when, but now we have a new way of doing it, and it's a way to shield, you know, scrutiny. You know, they escape scrutiny. Next, State of Michigan Income Tax Proposal. You know, it's interesting, compliance is a big issue. Compliance, people are writing in like, shouldn't you know what you owe in taxes, and shouldn't you this, and shouldn't you that? But I have questions. I look at things and I go, do campaigns pay income tax? You know, do their employees pay city income tax? We have people who come here, and when you look at the campaign finance reports, it's all wrong numbers. There are no deductions for big employees, and everybody thinks they're a 1099. And you're not a 1099. There's a Michigan test, and it's 10 points, and it's very specific. So like, people like to go, oh, just 1099 me, I don't have to pay anything until I make $600. We all, Rutherford pays all sorts of people, family, friends, lovers, you know? But I'm sorry, I withdraw that. I don't know the nature of that relationship. Bodat Park bathroom renovations. You know, we have, like, we're spending all this money on bathrooms in the parks, and I'm so glad that for four months of the year, whatever they're gonna be open, there will be bathrooms. But it's a lot of people said, they're not, who's gonna monitor them? We have cameras, like in, I don't call it whatever it's not, Hawthorne Park before it was taken away from us or renamed after a plantation. Hawthorne Park has wonderful cameras that show who comes and goes. That doesn't prevent crime. That just shows who came and went. And if you could put on a clown costume, you can go dance your way in, trash the bathrooms, and dash your way out, nobody's gonna find you. It's not, it makes no sense. Other cities are figuring out how to do bathrooms while protecting the populace and the city's investment. Last, the obsolete property thing. People, you gotta look at this map. It's from Green Street to Oghama, Huron, north and south. What properties? We, I know people here who have properties within that zone, and they're going to make it obsolete property. People need to look at the Oprahs, they've been given out, they've not been terribly successful. We always give them maximum amount of tax years that we don't get income, and we have nothing to show for it in the, look at, what is it, Longfellow School, or, I'm sorry, I can't say, Nicholas Mesmer Mateo's property, I'll just say that. Chickweed, red chickweed, breaded mikes. That's enough for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson, what items? Ms. Gloria Miller, what items? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Please. Hey, okay, thank you.
I want to speak in regards to the retirees and coming on the 17th. I'm hoping and praying that we do get an audience for this city of Pontiac GERS members. And that's another thing that I want to talk about to the citizens of Pontiac. I'm talking about GERS right now. I think of all the people that have passed when it started, even with this administration, because our administration, gee, have a resolution, but it just didn't come to fruition. Now, why it did not under Mayor Grimaldi, I don't know. I have my theory. If you want to see me in the street, I have my theory. But I will say this, it's a lot of people have passed away. You can tell a leader about the way he treats his people, just like a man of his house. You can tell what he is by the way he treats his people, okay? And when I speak Pontiac, I got many of you out there Hispanics, white, it doesn't matter. When I say city of Pontiac, I'm talking about all of you, because we all bleed the same. No matter what you think, we all bleed the same. But with this issue going on with the GERS issue, and these people that have died, and I know many of them, it breaks my heart, because I worked with them. I've worked with them. And see, Pontiac, that's why it's so important to put people up there that can relate to you, that know the struggle of this city. I know the struggle of the city. Many of us in here know the struggle of the city. And I'm talking to the young people out there. I want you to step up. Step up. It's your time now. It's your time for new leadership. You gotta wipe all this old corrupt stuff out the way. You can't, someone mentioned earlier how we can fix this. You gotta get rid of the old stuff. It doesn't work. It doesn't work. They been in these positions too long. They know it too well. They corrupt to the toe. You know? It just, it is what it is. And you gotta see, and stop taking these people as your friends. They not. When it come to your money, they not. You think for yourself. The city is being gentrified, and we got people up there helping them to come in here and gentrify us. Young people, you're gonna be hurt the worst if you don't put the right mayor in the seat. And I can tell you, there are a lot of people out there asking me what mayor I'm gonna vote for. I'll just tell you this, he's not in his room. So you figure that out.
Ms. Miller, I need to bring you back to Agenda Address.
I'm with the Agenda Address. GERS.
Okay.
The people in city of Pontiac are tired, sick and tired of being sick and tired. Pontiac, show up and show out and keep fighting. Never stop fighting, never.
President McGinnis, that concludes Agenda Address. No, it's not. It's not on there. No, it's not on there. No, she's not on the list. Thank you.
All right, we're at Public Communications. Order in the chambers. These are just quick-hit updates, and we did this in part because we weren't getting consistent updates or answers, so we're trying to bring it forward. And I know Ms. Miller was mad at me for doing it, but she asked for me to include the courthouse information, so I did it. A, City Retirees Enhanced Pension Benefits Court Proceeding Status Update. Judge Lawson has, order in the chambers, Judge Lawson has scheduled the hearing on a joint motion for preliminary approval of the settlement update for September 17th of this year, 1 o'clock PM, held at Room 767 of the United States District Court, Theodore 11 U.S. Courthouse, 231 West Lafayette Boulevard in Detroit. So that was shared with you at last meeting. That'll happen before our next city council meeting. The public is welcome to participate in that, should you be able and interested. Also noteworthy, after that action, presuming, and what we hope that will happen will be a favorable ruling, mailing notification in the following days will go out to all of the impacted parties in those following days. And we just wanted to let you know that that will be something that will follow this September 17th hearing. There will be a court-ordered notification to all the impacted parties, and that's something we want you to look forward to. Should that's, we'll share that at the next council meeting, but don't know exactly how the time will work out, but we will still share the content of that report and information. Mayor, do you have anything further you'd like to expound on? Okay. B, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Bridge Reconstruction Project. We shared updates, and the council voted that this will be an update on each council meeting that remains this year. The bid package is finalized, the bid posting is live. That bid posting will remain until September 23rd, was it Deputy Mayor? September 23rd of this year. And then, following that, it will come to city council for us for proposed demolition and construction contractors, with demolition slated to begin this fall. Mayor, anything further?
Yeah, just a quick update. I did talk with our DPW director yesterday, and he anticipates that once we get those bids on September 23rd, we can have a very quick turnaround to actually bring the demolition and construction contract before city council on September 30th, so we can get that approved and get that demolition of that bridge underway.
Okay. Councilwoman James, would you like to give the next public communication on the CN Railroad Crossing?
Just to say that the work is complete, President McGinnis, and they did a beautiful job. I've been over it several times. I think most people are satisfied with the work that was done.
So Walton Boulevard is no longer detoured or blocked. You can navigate Walton Boulevard. Thank you for your advocacy and work on that matter. D, at the last city council meeting, we voted to finalize the design, the scope of work, and the budget. The guaranteed maximum pricing is set for a $31 million project. Work begins in the coming weeks, and when we have exact dates of that project update, we will keep that information coming. E, the city council previously approved a purchase agreement for 300 West Huron, the former Pontiac Central High School. At the last city council meeting, we updated a new purchase agreement. Since that last meeting, that purchase agreement has been executed by both parties, and the earnest money deposit of $600,000 has been paid. That is refundable through the end of this year during the due diligence period, which is underway in terms of mechanicals, site... is underway, in terms of mechanicals, site, all that, verifying all the materials and information for the property. It's a 410,000 square foot building and a 16-acre parcel, so the due diligence period is now underway. We will update the community with new developments on that front. The Pontiac Arts Crawl, presented by the city's Arts Commission, is happening on Saturday, September 13th, this Saturday, noon until 10:00 PM. Downtown businesses have also been, on the north side of downtown, they want to make sure you know that it's expanding, so the footprint goes from downtown on Saginaw Street, including north of Huron, with those participating businesses. That's free and open to the entire community. Relatedly, on September 18th, there's now a new concert set for 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 18th, at Hidden River Plaza. A few live musical performances, including on the marquee of the Flagstar Strand Theater. So if you wanted more opportunities for live musical performances, you have this Saturday, the 13th downtown, and next Thursday, the 18th downtown, 7:00 PM on the 18th. You heard about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Town Hall Meeting in this chamber, so that's on the 15th. All are invited. The City Council voted to authorize the Bodat Park Bathroom Facility renovations, and we anticipate that work will be underway this fall. When we have more project timeline details, we will share it. This is new. There's a new round of senior chore program applications for the City of Pontiac Senior Chore Program. You can submit your applications now through October 3rd. The next Planning Commission meeting for the city is next Wednesday, September 17th, 6:00 PM. The agenda includes two Oakland County downtown parking structures, the proposal, part of their downtown redevelopment, a marijuana business for adult-use recreational marijuana, and the Mark Twain School Site Plan for the proposed facility that would follow there. Relatedly, and it's wild that I'm criticized for it, we just wanted to make sure neighbors knew that the demolition is underway. It's private property. A demolition permit was pulled, and so this fall, the demolition of the decades-long vacant Mark Twain School, Alinda Vista, in the Pontiac Knolls neighborhood, is underway. Again, the city's not doing it. The city's not paying for it. But we want to make sure, as a courtesy, neighbors knew that that's underway. L, Community Benefits Ordinance Research and Drafting Finalization is underway. Want to thank Council President Pro Tem William Carrington and Councilwoman Melana Jones for your work on that, and Pro Tem leading, running point. We expect council readings on that, starting at the next meeting, September 30th, and into October. And then you have on the agenda, the remaining City Council meetings scheduled for the year. More may be added. But the next regular City Council meeting scheduled is for Tuesday, September 30th, at 6:00 PM. Councilman Goodman, you have a public communication as well.
Yes, so I'll go in order of nearness. The first thing is, there is a rally happening this Friday at 5:00 at the Crowfoot to support the Pontiac teachers and students. Because if you've been paying attention, it has not been a great time to be a unionized teacher in the City of Pontiac. The second thing, which is the one I'm always excited about, is there's another pullover prevention clinic. Ooh, yay. And that will be September 21st, which is a Sunday, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. This time, it will not be at the Baldwin Center. It will be at Grayson Peace Community Church, which is 451 West Kennet Road, which is directly across the street from Alcott and from North Hill Farms. So again, it will not be at the Baldwin Center. I will have to have signage there, because people are used to being there. But it will be September 21st, so less than two weeks from now, at Grayson Peace Community Church, across from North Hill Farms and across from Alcott. Same things as always, we'll be having car repairs, free food, resources, and the like. But just want to make sure that you know that it is not at the Baldwin Center, and is at Grayson Peace Community Church at 451 West Kennet. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the last four years, the communications have been on the agenda. We're just trying to make them be as useful for the community as possible. We are now at number one on the agenda. Is there a motion for adoption of the zoning map ordinance amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Or?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Parker. This was before us on various different occasions, including with the first reading at the last meeting. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you. So yes, we have talked about this quite a bit, but I'll have our planning member, Paul Herring, come to the podium. We also have a city attorney here as maybe necessary to answer any questions. But this, again, is all about facilitating the redevelopment of the Lighthouse Campus, where Lighthouse is headquartered, and where they intend to expand housing options, as well as a grocery store, so that members of our community have a lot more choice when it comes to fresh produce and healthy food. Paul, take it away.
Good evening. So this is a review process. Obviously, went to Planning Commission already, and it was recommended for approval. City Council reading was August 26th. That was completed. And now here, we're at the second reading for the request. So ZMA 25-004, address is 46156 Woodward Avenue. The parcel's ending in 011 and 013. Applicant is Lighthouse. And the proposed use, green space addition to Lighthouse Campus. Zoning District is currently R1, and the proposed district is CO Residential Office District. This request is for rezoning from R1 to CO to remove the current parking area and replace it with an extended, I'm sorry, an extended green space. So this is the parcel in question here. As you can see, it's a parking lot off of Center Street. A portion of a parking lot, rather. So this is zoning map, CO, R1, R1. So this is the master plan right here. As you can see, it's Neighborhood Residential, being right there. So these are two photographs on Center Street, north and south. This is the parcels in question. As you can see, their parking lot area is right there. This is Lighthouse Campus. Now, this is R1 zoning district. Roughly, R1 zoning district is intended to encourage suitable environment for families, typically with children. Any uses are limited to one-family dwelling unit structures and certain compatible uses to create a neighborhood environment. The following uses are permitted by right. One-family dwelling unit, park, urban agriculture, community gardens. Now, for SEP, it would be bed and breakfast, golf course, private recreation, religious institution, school. So for the CO district, the CO district is intended to provide for a mixture of uses that are appropriate along thoroughfare and collector streets that have low to moderate traffic volumes. The following uses are permitted by right. Again, single-family homes, art galleries, municipal uses, nursing homes, urban agriculture, park or recreation facility. The following are by SEP, mixed-use building, boarding or lodging house, religious institution, college/university, major/minor utilities. So R1 versus CO. On the whole, R1 is less permissive than CO. R1 is intended, again, for solely for roughly single-family dwellings, bed and breakfast, parks, schools, institutional uses, and permitted uses allowed by right by some SEP. For CO, typically intended for municipal buildings, including office buildings, minor utilities, recreation facilities, permitted uses, again, are allowed by SEP. So these are the standards of approval. You're very familiar with these. So I'll go through them quick. So analysis, based on the master plan, the parcel is designated Neighborhood Residential. The current zoning consists of a CO zoning abutting the subject site to the north. Green buffer area is consistent with the master plan. Based on the site plan, the existing parking lot is proposed to become green space buffering the residential parcel to the south. And this is our recommendation, roughly, a recommendation with approval and one condition. Applicant shall add the two parcels, those ending in 011 and 013, to the original conditional rezoning agreement. So my presentation has ended.
Thank you. It's very straightforward, but is there any further discussion from council members? The next item on the agenda is also related, and again, it's just updating due to the time window change. Is there any further discussion on adoption of a zoning map ordinance amendment 25-004 for the Lighthouse Conditional Rezoning Extension for 46156 Woodward Avenue? Parcels 1433152011 and 1433152013 from R1 to C0. Hearing, no further discussion. Roll call and adoption. Clerk Hodley.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
The motion carries. The zoning map ordinance amendment has been adopted. We're going to move now to, if there's a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor to enter into the Lighthouse Conditional Rezoning Agreement. Is there a second?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Parker. Again, this is updating the time window. I want to acknowledge that representatives from Lighthouse, as well as their architectural team, are present tonight, even though it's straightforward. But thank you for putting the hours in, three hours in, almost. Hearing, any discussion? Any discussion? Any further information from planning or the administration? Again, this has been before us previously. Roll call and adoption of the resolution. Clerk Hodley.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution's adopted. Thank you very much. We're at number three. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution entering into an agreement with the State of Michigan for City of Pontiac Income Tax Administration Modernization?
Moved by Carrington.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilwoman James, so now we can at least just engage with it. My vision is that we will postpone this to the September 30th meeting. This gives the Finance and Personnel Committee an opportunity to have their regular meeting and have greater review and research on the matter. This is the first time that City Council is hearing the matter. One question that I wanted to ask, but it's best for administration to answer it, and you can get it to the Finance and Personnel Subcommittee. We currently contract for a lot of the income tax administration. The firm is something, I want to, don't get the name wrong, but Information Software Systems or Information Systems Software, if that sounds right. I'd be interested to know the terms and the length of that contract, so that way we can understand how that fits into any potential timeline. And that's just a question that I'd welcome for the Subcommittee to receive as well. Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I also like to add a few questions to the administration prior to that Subcommittee meeting. One, for the last 10 years, could you give me projected of yearly loss revenue when it comes to tax collections? And also, could you give them percentage of those that work in the city but not live in the city when it comes to that tax revenue as well for the last 10 years?
Mayor Grimald.
Yeah, I do just want to take an opportunity, and probably should have said this earlier. I think that's probably the biggest category of people we're losing. I don't know that for sure, and we'll dig in and find out. But if I had to guess, I'd guess that most of our missed collection of owed city income tax is actually owed by non-residents who work here versus residents of the city. But we'll dig in and find out the specific numbers.
Okay. Any final discussion before we postpone that to the next meeting? Hearing, could I have a motion to postpone this resolution to September 30th?
Support.
By Councilwoman Parker, seconded by Council Pro Tem Carrington. We're at number three. It's a motion to postpone that resolution. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing, no. Roll call. Clerk Hodley.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. And I'll just make a housekeeping note, that was a motion to postpone. It was unanimous. That would be included in a number ratio if you're trying to say if people vote the same way over the course of many years. Many of these votes we take are very routine and straightforward, including, we're just moving to postpone. So there is, each council member has their own thought process, has their own review and decision-making process, and I just want to emphasize that, because that's been true these last four years, and I'm grateful for their independent thought process. All right, we're at number four. It's a public hearing. The City of Pontiac invites the public review and comment on the draft 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR. This report summarizes the city's use of Federal Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Program, home funds, during the program year from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025. That's, language is taken from the public hearing notice that was in publications. You can also see on the agenda how you can comment on it. We give the floor to the administration now for further information in introducing the CDBG team. And then we'll open it up for public hearing, if anyone has any questions or opportunities, and then we'll move on from there. Mayor Grimald.
Thank you. Just by way of brief introduction of this topic, one of my administration's goals when we entered office, and I know it's a, was a goal that City Council shared, was to bring the administration of community development block grant dollars and home funds back in-house to the city. The administration of those federal allocated funds had been sent to Oakland County by emergency managers and had been housed at Oakland County until recently. We have now brought the administration of both categories of funds back in-house to the city. We hired Tuesday Redmond, who many of you know because of her longstanding history in the past of working here at the city. We hired Ms. Redmond to come onboard and administer these dollars. She has been doing that. She's been doing a great job. And this agenda item is to approve a draft consolidated plan to allow public comment on that plan. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Redmond to talk in greater detail about the, the report, I should say, not plan, and to, excuse me, and to talk about the opportunity for public comment.
So basically, the CAPR is a report that's due every year to HUD by September 30. And it's just a review of what has been addressed with the federal funds that we receive. City of Pontiac did not receive the funds until December of 2024. So we kind of missed four, four or five months of, you know, getting things in place to be able to move forward. While we still, also still, when I came on, we still had some of the previous year fundings. So the CAPR address, in the CAPR, it does address what we've done with the previous year fundings that was funneled through Oakland County, and it also addressed what we're doing, going to do moving forward. So it's just a report that just has to be turned into HUD, and they have to approve it, and we definitely don't want to be late. And then it will be the start of the 15-day public comment period. So you have 15 days to make comments. It's on the website. It also will be available for review in the office. And it's what we have to do every year. Any questions?
This is a procedural question that the mayor or yourself could address. The resolution that's before us, it's about saying the City Council authorizes your department to receive and file the CAPR, and further authorizes its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Should we wait to adopt that resolution after the public hearing and the public comment period?
So that's the, we have to have the public hearing. So this is the public hearing. So you have to adopt the public hearing. And then there's the 15-day comment period. So yes, you need to approve it. So at the end of the 15-day public comment period, whatever comments are received will be, are incorporated into the CAPR, and it will, it still will be available. It will be updated. Any comments will be updated into the CAPR, and then I will submit it to HUD. And then we, we just wait for their approval.
So Mayor, do you understand the nature of my question? So I just want to verify, should we adopt the resolution prior to the 15-day comment period, or do we have to do it after the 15-day comment period?
Normally, normally, it's the, my previous experience.
Yeah.
I've never went to, had to go before council.
Okay.
We've always had a public hearing. We set a public hearing, and we held, me as a community development director, I held the public hearing. Citizens from all over Wayne County, we did a virtual, we did in-person, and, and then we submitted the CAPR to, to HUD. I've never had to go before council. I've never had to go before council to have, to officially have a public hearing. We've always said it, as long as we put it in the paper and we held the public hearing. And citizens still had, were able to make any comments that they wanted to make.
I understand your question. I frankly don't know the answer, but I would defer to the expertise of Ms. Redmond. I think council could at its option vote to approve it, and if council wanted to do that, I would recommend they do that after the opportunity for a public hearing on it because otherwise it doesn't really make sense to invite the public to comment. But it sounds like, based on Ms. Redmond's expertise, that's not really necessary as long as the public has an opportunity to make public comment before Ms. Redmond submits that report to the federal government.
Yes, because this is the public hearing. So you have to approve this public hearing.
All right, thank you for that. So we will hold the public hearing, and then without objection, we'll proceed with the resolution as well. Is there anything else you want to give for the community a preview of what the CAPR covers?
So it covers, covers what we've been working to get towards the demolition program. It covers the down payment assistance. That's also funnelled through the Oakland County funds, which I believe that the contract is going to be coming before the council in the next couple of weeks where residents can apply for, to receive down payment assistance to purchase a home in the city of Pontiac. It covers the streets that were completed. So what we, what we had to word it was, this is what's been going on in the last year with the year fundings that we receive from Oakland County. Pontiac is moving forward on all the other CDBG funds that we receive.
Hearing no further information from administration about the CAPR. We are going to open the public hearing to allow resident feedback, and then we will continue with the agenda after everyone's had an opportunity. All right. With that, the public hearing is now open at 8:53 PM. Are there any requests to speak during the public hearing? Okay, yes, that would be in order for the public hearing. You can raise your questions, and staff can hope to, no, unfortunately. If you could state your name and address.
Roseland North Cross, 168 Astorwood Street, Pontiac. I just have a question. I actually looked at the CAPR today, and right here where you have the funded amount, and then there was, which was 273,000 plus some more, and then it was 80,000 drawn in the program year. So my question is, is the money that wasn't spent, does that move over to the next year?
Yes, it does.
And that 80,000 that was spent, what was that spent on?
That was spent on administration costs.
Okay, so it's like employees?
Yes.
Ms. Redmond, we're going to have you answer those questions after she get done speaking. Okay, because we got, it's public, it's open for everyone?
Yeah.
So we're going to wait till everyone get an opportunity to speak, and then we bring you back so you can answer the questions for the public, okay?
Any other requests? All right, very good. We have a resident coming up.
Do you want my name and address? Or do I just?
It's required, unfortunately.
All right. Darlene Clark, 506 Nebraska. Just a couple of questions for the president, Mike McGinnis. The problem that I have, that you had a question that could not be asked, many a times I said to you, you need to have an attorney in that seat. In this situation, what is a very important situation, not only to the residents of Pontiac, but it's important to everyone involved on both CBG fund application. Why even move forward or even address this until you get the correct answers to what you need to? Not from the administration and not from the person who's actually handling it. Hold off until you can get answers to bring to the people. And then one more question. Would this affiliate with Mr. Bass, with his CGB fund program? Will you guys collaborate together and find the solutions in handling this situation?
Thank you. Other requests during the public hearing?
Tamika Ramsey, 296 Second Avenue. My question is, outside of this public hearing, how are we communicating this to the community? I know that in the past, we've had CDBG funding that was open to organizations applying for it. What's going to be the process here to make sure that these, these dollars get met in the community? Thank you.
Thank you. Further participation in the public hearing? Any other participants? Any other participants? Any other participants? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed at 8:57 PM. Administrator Redmond, would you like to expound on any further thoughts based on the questions raised?
To go back to the first question regarding, what she was looking at is an actual report that's submitted with the CAPR that identified what funds we've drawn down from the HUD system, the federal government. So what she, the amount that she was looking at was 273,045. That's administration costs for staff and other supplies and different things we have to, to be able to run the program. So what was drawn down was 87,000 for administrative staff. We're just now getting into, we'll be, over the next six months, we'll be getting into more of the project drawdowns. So no other project drawdowns have been done as it relates to the 2024 CDBG fund. We're still putting everything in place, putting contracts, getting contracts for various projects that's going to be moving forward. But we also had to keep in mind the previous funds that needed to be expensed from, from previous years, that we had to address that as well so we can move forward. And once we're done expending those funds, which is the down payment assistance and the demolition, we will no longer be, have to go through Oakland County for those previous funds that were not previously, those funds that were not previously expended.
All right. Since the public hearing is concluded, we're going to take a motion on the resolution, then we can have council discussion with the motion in front of us, but.
And to the answer to her question was, attorney did look at the information when it's submitted. Before we come here, they look at it to confirm that it's legit and what we need to do.
All right.
To Tamika's question, we posted on the internet. I've been to several council CDC meetings. I actually was at one on Monday with Mr. Bass. So I also kind of need a schedule. You know, if any council members wanted me to attend, it's good to have that schedule to just, to be able to address. When it's time to do the action plan and all the other plans that we have to do, we do hold a public hearing, and which we've been here before the council over the last eight months. And we've had it on the city's website as well, and it's been posted in the library. It's been posted at the Peterson Center, the Boeing Center, as well as City Hall, and, you know, so, yeah.
All right. The public hearing having concluded, is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing submission of the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. So we can now have discussion. Is it fair to say, Administrator Redmond, that this is really like the after report, sort of saying this is what's concluded, and now we're submitting? And then when we're doing the programming for the year, that's the best time to help impact what shall be done?
Well, we've already had the action plan where we had the public hearing for the 2025 fund. We have yet received that from HUD. We should probably be receiving that over the next, probably the next month before they do the shutdown. So, and then we'll be planning for the next year's funding over the next two to three months. And everyone will be notified of a public hearing just to, you know, get ideas of what we're going to be using the funding for.
But to make sure I've got it right, the action plan time is the most effective time for council members, community members?
Yes.
For us to really dial up the engagement and notification?
Yes.
Because this is more like the post-op.
Yes.
It's concluded, and we're satisfying the report submission.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for breaking that down. Discussion on the motion, Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I have a few questions concerning the data that you presented to council in this report. Now, there's a lot of zeros around racial demographics as well as income demographics. I know that these are requirements of these particular grants. So did the city not collect any of this information?
No, there was no information to collect because we did not expend any funds. When we, when we start expending the funds for 2024, the 2024 is when we go into IDIS and set it up in the HUD system, accomplishments are put in that system. For instance, if it's down payment assistance, whoever that homeowner is, that information, if it's a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom, or if it's a single-family home, that information will be entered into the system. And that's when that data will show up on the reports that we pull. So these are reports that I pull down from the federal grant system, and there was no data to report because there was no funds expended on that 2024. So now, it won't be like this going forward because we'll be expending those funds, and we have to enter that data before we can close out any information.
And my follow-up question is concerning, from looking at this report, did you pull funding from earlier years and bring it into 2024?
No.
No?
So, no, because that money, the Oakland County money, Oakland County draws down that, those funds. We don't have access to Oakland County's funds.
All right, thank you for that, for that description. Thank you.
Any final discussion on the resolution before us? Councilman Parker, your microphone?
One quick question. You, the funded amount is 273,000?
That's just for the administration cost, for staff.
So how much are we actually spending to actually help people?
Pardon?
How much are we spending? Do you have the, is it the 80,000 that's going to?
Staff.
The 80,000 is going to staff?
Yes, staff and the supplies that we need to, you know, run the program.
So what is the 273 going to?
That's, that's all administration.
All administration?
Yeah, that portion is administration.
So why would we separate the 273 from the 80?
Because we drew it down from the federal system. That shows what the allocation was, the 273, 04, 45, and the other part shows what we've drawn down. That's all we've drawn down. So there's a balance from the 273.
So we subtracting the 80 from the 273?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
Any final discussion? Hearing none. And as a housekeeping note, Clerk Doyle is still Clerk Doyle, he's just at a conference. So Chief Assistant Clerk Hodley, it's quicker to say Clerk Hodley. Roll call.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Number six, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve participation in the Purdue Sackler and Secondary Manufacturers opioid settlements? Moved by Councilman Goodman. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Parker. The matter is before us. This is a similar format and framework as other big pharma manufacturers in the opioid settlements where the city will receive funds as a result. Mayor Grimal and administration, anything further?
No, I think this is pretty straightforward. We're one of the members of a class action that resulted in the city receiving these funds.
On a related but separate note, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, I'm going to bring up with you tomorrow, but we've been contacted at city council regarding a PFAS class action settlement where we may be entitled to resources to help resolve some mandated, you know, remediation that may happen. So just in case I forget to bring it up tomorrow, I just wanted, since it's related but different.
Yeah, and we can talk in greater detail about that tomorrow. But yes, we are aware of that.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion on this resolution before us? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call. Clerk Hodley.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Councilman Rutherford's here, if you'd like to call her.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
And McGinnis is a yes, so that's all seven in favor. That resolution is adopted. And as a point of information, we don't yet know exactly what dollars that will generate. It'll depend in part about how many other entrants to the class action and so forth. But we will keep the community updated as that comes in greater detail. We're at number seven. It's a resolution to schedule a public hearing on September 30th to expand an obsolete property rehabilitation district bound by parcels to the north and south of Huron Street from Green Street to Ogama Road and additional parcels in the city of Pontiac, Oakland County, Michigan, as described in Exhibits A and B. Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman Jones. City council has authorized a few specific Oprah districts during this term of city council. And so this is the latest proposal from the administration. You have the floor, Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, thank you. I will just note a couple of Oprahs, and there may be others, that we should at least touch on and remind folks about. So feel free to chime in. Economic manager, Younger. But I do just want to emphasize that actually some of the Oprahs that we have approved have been quite successful, including the Webster School redevelopment, which has been progressing at a good rate, and people, I think, can already see the improvements on the outside of that building. We've also approved an Oprah for a project that will start getting underway, we anticipate, later this year, the redevelopment of the Oakland Press Building. And then as part of that project, actually, the state has also contributed and approved 80, excuse me, 80 million dollars in transformational brownfield credits, both for that rehabilitation of the Oakland Press Building, but more importantly, for a coming new construction of new, almost 300-unit apartment development. And there may be some other Oprahs that I'm not mentioning.
Casa Del Rey.
Casa Del Rey has an Oprah, as well as a neighborhood enterprise.
91 North Saginaw, which is where multicultural La Familia is located, and the building is almost full. There have been several others in the downtown, 46 North Saginaw, which is a Lauren Guznick building, 41 North Saginaw, another Lauren building. And I can provide a whole list, but those are the ones come off the top of my head. We also have approved one for Longfellow School on Aster Road, and those are the ones that come to mind right now. But I have a list, and I'd be happy to provide it to council.
Thank you. So I bring all that up to say that at least most of the Oprahs that we've approved have been successful and are in progress of moving forward with actually a really strong track record. There are a couple that Ms. Younger has mentioned that maybe don't fall into that category because we haven't seen a lot of action there, like Longfellow School, for example. But most of the projects that have been approved have seen real success. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Younger to talk in greater detail about the expansion of this Oprah zone along the Huron Corridor. And I know that we have another item following this agenda item about a proposed specific Oprah project approval at 35 South Johnson Street. And with that, take it away, Ms. Younger.
Okay, sure. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, council, mayor, deputy mayor. This expansion, this is not the public hearing. We're just asking you to schedule the public hearing. So I'll talk in greater detail at the public hearing, but I'm happy to entertain any questions today. In order to do an Oprah, we were approached by a project to, at 35 Johnson, and it is not in Oprah district. So in order to consider that project, we would have to create an Oprah district. When we became aware that there was already Oprah for MICA 6, it made sense to expand along the Huron Street corridor with the intent of spurring development. For instance, the Pontiac Hospital is there that at some point it's going to have, maybe dealt with. So we looked at what made sense. In addition, Main Street Pontiac has adopted Huron Street as their secondary quarter. So it makes sense to partner with Main Street to also try to attract additional development along there, not just do an, you can do Oprah for one parcel, which was what happened in the case of MICA 6. But to us, it made more sense to look at expanding that whole district along the Huron Street corridor to capture investment potentially. to capture investment potentially by Main Street, focusing on it, and as an incentive to encourage development along that quarter. So, we're proposing that expansion to capture the new project, but also potential development projects that could happen in the future. I will remind council that no, each project would have to still come back to council in a district. So, approving the district does not preclude, does not say that you're approving every parcel for an Oprah in that district. I would still have to bring those projects back individually to City Council.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, President McGinnis? Yes, sir. A quick question, and I understand exactly what you're stating, but what's the projection of lost taxes?
For the whole district? It's hard to project. It's hard to project because some of the district has residential in it, so they would be exempt. It's hard. I mean, I could look at and try to give you a projection by the time of the public hearing, but it's hard to know how many buildings were going to actually come to us. But I'll take a good stab at it and I'll bring it to the public hearing.
Thank you.
So, this, the entire stretch of this is located in District 2, Councilwoman Jones's district. And it goes from Green Street to Ogama. And if you can orient your mind, we're looking at a vacant apartment building at Green Street and Huron, the Pontiac General Hospital and some of their vacant space, at least two vacant churches, a vacant former funeral home, a many number of vacant storefronts, a vacant bank tower. There's just a whole lot of obsolete properties where they are not active and are in need of redevelopment. The biggest one was the former Webster Elementary School. And because of the Oprah, that was, in part because of the Oprah, that project is nearly complete and will be opening as the Webster Community Center in February. That's their targeted opening date. So, that obsolete property is being redeveloped and rehabilitated. To confirm, an Oprah, though, has a maximum window sunset of 15 years.
12.
12 years, even shorter.
Yes.
And the city council, this or future city councils, can shorten that window. It's up to 12. It doesn't have to be the full maximum.
Correct. And again, each, each project within that district would have to be brought back. But rather than having each time to create a district for a project, it made sense to us, because of the number of buildings that you cited, to create the district and then bring back individual projects as they occur.
And an Oprah does not eliminate a tax obligation. It essentially, is it correct, sort of sets it for a period of time? So, that way, as the improvements are made, or in the early years of the improvements, it's still set at when the Oprah certificate began?
That is correct.
Councilwoman Jones, this is in District 2. Any feedback or reflections on the question before us?
Yes, actually, very quickly, and I'm sure most colleagues feel this way, aside from the concerns about tax loss. As Council President said, these are vacant areas. If you've been down lately and if you had a chance to tour the Webster Center recently, I know that public tours were open at one time recently. And the building is beautiful.
It absolutely is.
Rejuvenating, it's, well, not rejuvenating itself, but it's becoming revitalized with the, you know, efforts of MICA 6 and everyone who's had a part in doing that. And that is what we want to continue to expand through the Huron district. So, just wanted to give that reflection. And please, if you have not had a chance to see the Webster building, I'm not sure if public tours will be offered again before the opening, but I will certainly, you know, pass your information along if you are interested in seeing some, some of the recent renovations over there. I know there are several pictures. I would be happy to share that with you.
And just for, that is the map of the proposed district that's up there. It's approximately 125 parcels, but again, all of them are not commercial, some are residential. They would not be necessarily open for Oprah. So, but that's a map of what we propose for the Oprah district.
Was that 125?
Parcels, correct. But not, again, not all of them would even be eligible for an Oprah. But it didn't make sense to try to X out the residential and have even a more strange-looking district, so.
I do hope one day the former laundry chute becomes something cool again. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, President. My question, simple, really. As you created this district, has there been any interest in anybody in putting any other properties in what we've discussed?
Not yet, but I hope to use it as a marketing tool as we move forward. And now that I have staff that goes out, we have staff now that go out and do business expansion and retention calls. And so, that staff person now will be going along the corridor, working in conjunction with Main Street to try to market and attract development along that corridor. And this can be one incentive that we can use to attract future development.
Councilwoman James?
Is that the, going in our package?
Yes.
That is.
Mm-hmm. There's a map. It's behind, there's Exhibit A, which lists all the 125 parcels and their legal description. And then Exhibit B is the map.
Okay. I can't really see it, but I'm just concerned about this area. Is it all on Huron?
No, well, it, those, some of the parcels dip back because some of the parcels extend beyond Huron.
What's this one here at the end? Where is that extending?
Toledo High, that's the hospital. I mean, I'm sorry, I say Toledo. I say Toledo, I mean Pontiac. I used to do a lot of deals with Toledo Hospital. Yeah, that's the hospital.
Pontiac General Hospital and all the sea of parking lots to the south.
Okay.
Correct.
And it looks like it might, it might get one building to the south.
So, that goes from Huron all the way over to pretty much Orchard Lake?
In some instances, not in all instances, but to capture, again, that parcel fronts along Huron and as well as the parking lots and all of that. And to us, it made sense, if something's going to happen with the hospital, we need to include all of that potentially.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so this resolution is to schedule the public hearing. Mayor Grimald?
Yeah, I don't need to belabor the point, but it might make sense, Ms. Younger, as we approach a public hearing on creating the zone or the certificate, that you, if you can, just quickly summarize what a property must be in order to qualify for an Oprah. Because there actually has to be a structure, a pre-existing building that is obsolete, I think. But you might want to.
We do. And quickly, equalization has to issue a certificate of obsolescence. This building has received that, but there are some times when equalization denies the certificate of obsolescence. There's a threshold of what kind of rehabilitation has to occur, and I'll break that all out for you. But in general, it has to be declared obsoles, obsolete by the county taxation and equalization department. And there's some other criteria which I'll list out for you before the public hearing.
Any final discussion on the motion? Hearing on this was scheduled, that public hearing for September 30th, our next city council meeting here in these chambers. Roll call Clerk Codley.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The public hearing will be held on September 30th. Number eight, is there a motion to adopt that resolution to schedule a public hearing?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman Jones. This is specifically for an Oprah exemption certificate for 35 South Johnson Street. Mayor and administration, you have the floor.
Yeah, we touched on this a little bit on the last item, but we're not just proposing to expand the Oprah zone, if you will, or district, but we're also proposing to provide an Oprah to a specific property. And with, and that's the property at 35 South Johnson. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Economic Development Manager, Debra Younger.
That is correct. We were approached by Kirkland Group.
Sorry. We were approached by the Kirkland Group that wants to buy the property at 35 South Johnson to rehab it and return it to a medical facility with 15 clinics and a pharmacy there. And we think it's a great benefit to the community since the hospital is now kind of defunct. They are proposing about 3.4, almost 3.4 million in investment. They would have to do the roof, windows, HVAC. It's anticipated 50 permanent jobs and 50 construction jobs. And so, they are, and that's their application, very quickly. It's in your package, and there's the property description. And they are proposing a 10-year Oprah as opposed to the maximum of 12 years. And that's the building that we're referring to. And so, we'd be returning to medical clinics and a pharmacy at that facility.
Okay, again, this public hearing will be on September 30th, the next city council meeting. Mayor Grimald, my understanding is that Pontiac General Hospital is still an open and active business? Is that your understanding as well?
It is. I was going to mention that. They, it's a complicated question because they have a relatively low patient count currently, but they do have patients in the hospital. And it is still an active business. It has not shuttered.
So, the D word isn't what we exactly meant?
No, right. Yeah. It's not defunct, it's teetering.
It's going through transition.
There you go. That's another T word.
All right. Any discussion on this resolution scheduling the public hearing for this specific parcel? Councilman Parker, microphone?
I'm sure they'll probably ask at the town, the town hall meeting, but as we, as they're applying for the Oprah, is there any stipulations that they would make some of these construction jobs and jobs that would be available to the Pontiac residents?
We'll put it in the development agreement. We can put it in the development agreement, yes.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call Clerk Codley on the resolution scheduling the public hearing.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. And again, the community is invited to learn more and weigh in on September 30th. We're at number nine. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the contract? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Mayor and administration, you have the floor on information.
Well, thank you very much, Council President. I want to turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Terrence Price, to introduce this topic. We do have, I believe, a representative of 3D Creative Designs here so that if council members have questions about the program, we do have a representative here who can answer those questions.
Good evening, everybody. So, tonight before you is a resolution for this class. This class is not a new program here to the city of Pontiac. We have had hosted this class before. Matter of fact, we spoke about this in January of this year. The purpose of us bringing this class to you now is because of the consecutive sessions that we're going to have with this. So, our purchasing department has asked us, instead of just always having one class and then waiting on to the next, if we're going to use a class the entire year, put it together in one PO so we can come before council, getting it approved all at one time. So, within this, there's five sessions of this class that'll cover from this fiscal year until the end of next year. So, this is just one time, one go, that this class will be offered. It will be a buildup, so just like if you ever go to school, you go to college, you don't take a 100 class, then wait two, three years, take a 400 class. It's like one step, 100 here, 200 the next session, 300, so it's a progressive thing. Also, this class also touches on a age group that we do not currently always hit upon, which is the 18 to 49-year-old group. So, that 18-year-old group, it starts from before that in high school, gets you up to that 18-year-old, and then take us all the way to the 49-year-old group, but also you can go all the way up to 59 before you get to seniors. So, this is open to everybody to be involved with and to participate with. We do have the representatives here for the class tonight. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, council. Anyone has any question on this proposal?
I think I got one question.
Okay. Councilman Parker?
I think, I think that's her. Good afternoon. I don't remember your name, but I know that's what you've been working with.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Want to just state my name?
Please.
My name is Janisha Williams, and I'm the CEO of 3D Creative Designs. And I'm here for whatever questions you have.
Well, my question is real simple.
Yes.
In regards to these 3D classes that you're scheduling, have you already had any applicants apply for some? Have there been any people who have shown interest in applying for some of these classes that you're taking?
Since I checked the roster, there were five adults that were registered for the class so far for this class. And as far as the youth students, there was just a couple.
And how are we marketing, are we marketing with the schools and the other, within the community?
That's, that's a tricky question. What we do, we do market within, on the website that we have, through Instagram, through LinkedIn. We have reached out to some of the schools. There is a posting on just the youth recreation website for the class. But a lot of times, it's through word of mouth, it's through returning students, students that have taken the class, that have referred. We have reached as far as people that have showed up to what's called the Michigan Career Quest. Have you ever heard of that, the Michigan Career Quest? We have recruited through that entity as well.
Have you also listed with Job, Michigan Job Works?
With Michigan Works? Currently, right now, we do not have it listed with Michigan Works.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm done right there. Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions, Councilman?
No, I'm done.
Oh, okay. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford?
Good evening. First of all, condolences about your father. He was a great pastor in this community. So, again, my condolences to you and your family. I just have a question. What has been the outcome of how the students feel? I've seen it, I experienced it, but what have you guys seen it do for the young people that have been taking this class?
For the young people that have taken this class, I want to share one story. There was a male student that took our class. This young man lives in Pontiac under a single mother home. This young man was in quite a bit of trouble when he started our class. And at the time, he was the age of 12. And when he came to our class, he, we asked him what did he want to do with his future. He told us he wanted to be a basketball player. But he didn't really want to talk too much or engage too much in the class. After engaging with our class a couple of times, taking our class, this young man ended up being one of our stellar students. The position that he was in, he was no longer in. And by the end of the class, he wanted to become what's called an additive manufacturing technician, which is a person that runs a 3D printing machine. And from there, that young man is now involved in, I believe it's the MENA program with Max, Max Branner. And when he went to the first session, he was the youngest person in the class, but he was the only one that could speak to what 3D printing was.
I thank you for sharing this story. Appreciate it.
So, that's only one. But other than that, it gives leadership development. It gives a chance for entrepreneurship. It gives a segue to a similar career. And if anyone didn't know, by 2032, 3D printing will become a $58 billion industry.
Councilwoman, follow-up question?
I just wanted to say thank you again for sharing that story. I had the opportunity to see it in the class when it was at the Ruth Peterson Building, and I watched the older people, older adults come in and how they were excited to learn it. And so, I'm just, I fully support it. And again, I just thank you for everything that you guys do beyond that class, the things you do in your community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Mr., I'm sorry. Clerk Woman James, please, you have the floor.
My question is, is this a, since the age group is from 18 to 49, is this under the Recreation Department? Is this a Recreation Department program?
Yes, it is. Also, we tag that 18-year-old, but we also accept the high school age students as well. So, I mentioned that. So, we can take them, start them up in high school. As they get up to 18, they have the ability to still have opportunity to take these classes and continue on their development of these classes of their skills. Because 18 is considered a young adult. Even though in the, in the previous agreement, we understand that it goes up to age 21, I believe, we consider as a young adult and give them an opportunity to continue on.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple more.
Okay, go ahead. You have the floor.
The, you, you mentioned that the, because I believe the contract is for 50, 54,000?
56.
56,000. And you explained that that will cover five sessions from what date to what date? Could you give the? Could you give us those dates again?
This fiscal year, so September of 2025 through June of 2026.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Before you lead the podium, I also want to ask you a few questions. I definitely think this is a skill that's needed in our community. But it wasn't mentioned about low turnout. So how is the city actually helping to promote this particular project that you guys are supporting?
Well, we're going to be advertising on our site, but we've also been in development of a more recreation guide that's been brought up to us. We're looking and looking to partner with a service really soon. I'm starting the procurement process with that service that'll allow them access to not only post a guide on our website, on our page, but also families have the ability to download that particular guide so they can have a physical copy of that. So that's going to help us out a whole lot in terms of getting that out. Also, we're in the works of planning all of our 2026--
Let me just stop you. Pro Tem's running the point, but Mayor Grimal, your microphone's on, so.
We're also starting looking at our programming for 2026 by putting together our January through April offerings that'll help support that. And then also being able to come to you guys in terms of council, in terms of subcommittee by November, the November meeting with everything we want to offer for next year.
Okay. So you didn't mention the school district or the charter schools in the community? Because if you said it's going to start with high school students, so it seemed like that'll be a priority as well.
It is. She also had mentioned that she had reached out to them. I also attended a school board meeting on last night. And we're also working on some different things in terms of with high school, in terms of partnerships with some different key clubs and different other groups that's outside of the city, that we're hoping to build that flooring, that kind of relationship, that foundation to be able to offer even more and partner with them.
Definitely. My concern is that our staff do what we can to make this a success, because I'm really concerned with the numbers not being there to actually make sure that we're funding the right projects. So from our administration side, I really, really need you guys to actually work with the school district and try to get this information out to as many students across the city of Pontiac. Councilwoman Rutherford?
So I just have a question. Is it your job to promote this, or is it the youth manager's position to promote this?
It's a combination thing. With our department, it relies on teamwork. So we have a communications team that helps us in posting things. We also have our IT department. But we're trying to be creative and understanding how the times are now while trying to satisfy two things with virtual, online, different things, and then also being able to provide physical copies of programming that we do have. So it's not just a one-person thing, it's a whole department and some things.
And my follow-up is, do you guys have an outreach budget that is specifically for all youth programs? And if so, who's over that budget?
At this particular time, we do have a budget assigned to that. I believe it is placed in our youth recreation budget. However, these things are large printing items that has to go out, it has to go out for a bid. And at this particular time, that bid that was going out for our printing services, it was on hold.
Okay. Thank you for your honesty.
Yes, Deputy Mayor or the mayor, you seem like you had your hand up, so you have the floor.
Yeah, actually, Councilwoman Rutherford answered or asked one of my questions, which is, I interpreted Councilwoman James's question to be asking about whether this was being administered by the Youth Recreation Division under a manager, Tanisha Taylor, or whether this was being administered separately, directly under your lead because it's a broader age range. So that was one question that I thought that Councilwoman James was asking, and I wasn't sure of the answer. But the other question that's frankly more important probably is whether this went through a robust purchasing protocol or procedure, given the dollar amount, and whether it was put out for RFP or through some other competitive bidding process.
Before any programs go through for the end of the year, it goes through the purchasing process. Be quite honest, this is the first time I've ever really had to come before anybody and ask for permission to run a class. These type of items and things normally don't go out for RFP, for permission to actually run and do, because they're actually budgeted in your budget to have these things, to have these types of offerings. However, everybody has been going through the procurement process. We also have RFPs out for different other items that'll be coming before council here soon. So like, for an example, when we're paying officials for the year for basketball and soccer officials, instead of breaking that up, we're going to have one PO for that that's going to come, that's also being competitively bid out. And then those things are also taken care of through our procurement department. So yes, everything is through our procurement process.
Any other questions? And one final question, instance, for the mayor or the deputy mayor, can, is a RFP required for this particular proposal?
Well, I think it is, given the dollar amount. So I, because it's over $10,000, it needs to go through some sort of competitive bidding process or RFP. That's why I'm asking the question. Under city ordinances, that would be required.
Whatever order.
Hold up.
Okay.
Yeah, hold up. So Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
So that means this class won't be able to start if we send it to RFP. Is that my understanding? And the reason why I'm asking, before anybody get defensive, is because there are people that want to be in this class, that think this class is going to be on the fall program. So I thought, so let me make sure I got this right, that we have a youth budget and that the classes are paid under the youth budget. So have that changed? Because if it's changed, it's news to me.
Well, the budget is just the budget, but when we contract for services or for purchasing goods or services either, if it's over a certain dollar amount, it has to go through a competitive purchasing process. And that's why I'm asking the question. Now, it may have gone through the competitive purchasing process. I don't know the answer. That's why I was asking the question.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. President McGinnis, you have the floor.
So, council ordinances. Council ordinances require anything over $10,000 to have a competitive bidding. So that's the city council set that. And that's in order to make sure that money is spent effectively and everyone has a fair chance at it. We rely on the administration to ensure that those ordinances are complied with. So if you are doubting it, council is relying on you to know from your Parks and Recreation and your Purchasing Division if that, if the boxes were checked. And it's not to try and make it cumbersome, it's just so that way we're legally compliant, so that way no other vendor can come and say, ah, 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 you didn't bid that, pay me, even though I'm not offering the services either, or you owe me damages. So it's about making sure that we have it tight and right for the defend, protect the taxpayers.
That's exactly right. And so I assume if it got to this point, that it did go through that process, but as I ask these questions, I haven't gotten a clear answer.
Okay. We, the city council, are allowing it to be on the council administration's request. And if you're doubting it, what do you expect councils to deduce? Now, the request memo says that it's Parks, Recreation, and Purchasing. So I'm interpreting that to mean it's gone through purchasing and they've given the okay. Is that your understanding, Director?
Yes. Before the year even starts, every youth program that is submitted and ran goes through the purchasing department for a procurement process. Every single one. Even this one, because there's different things that the purchasing department has to check out. Everyone has a proposal that they submit to before the year starts.
Deputy Mayor?
So for clarity to what the director is saying and the question at hand, the director is correct that all of the items go through a purchasing process. But the specific question at hand is because this item is over $10,000, did it go through an actual competitive bid process, which is different than the general process that the Youth Recreation Department uses where it says, give us your ideas, because those ideas are normally $5,000 and less. So I don't know if it went through a competitive bid process where we specifically said, we are looking to do a program for creative, for 3D printing, and then we looked at multiple bids. I don't know that for a fact. The other thing that I would say is, it's been invoked a couple of different times that the Youth Recreation Division, and I just want to point out clearly that this is actually not being paid for through Youth Recreation, this is being paid for through the general parks budget, because it's not targeting just youth, it is actually targeting outside of that up to 21-year-age group.
I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you, President.
Oh, joy. So the, we want this to happen, and we think this is a great vendor on many levels. We just want to make sure that we're not violating the law by doing it. So Mayor and Deputy Mayor, the Purchasing Division and the Finance Department are under your domain and jurisdiction, not under city council. I know Finance Director was here earlier. I imagine at 9:42 at night, they might not be immediately available, but that's the confirmation that we need based on what has been expressed. And I am sorry that Director Price is put in this spot, because he's left twisting in the wind here. He's trying to deliver Parks and Recreation services. I just don't want to make his life and the vendor's life harder if we're giving a green light that we might not legally be able to give.
Well, agreed. That's why I've asked the questions. I've also texted the city attorney, but she, although she approved this to be on the agenda, doesn't seem to have the answer at hand. So I would recommend that we postpone this item so that we can get clarity.
Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. This definitely is frustrating. So, you know, I'm going to say that, because when these things come to us, you guys should already have all these answers for us. We had a vendor here. I immediately seen that it was over $10,000. So those questions have to be asked, and we asked, was this bided out? And we can't continue to do business in this way. We need to have those answers before these meetings. So I make a motion to postpone into our next meeting.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Parker. Our next scheduled meeting is September 30th. I'm sorry I missed the initial part, but when were they starting, wanting to start?
We was hoping to start soon, but we'll put a delay on it. We'll reconvene and redo our dates for it until this matter is taken care of.
Okay. City council may be open if there's also other business items that come up, if we need to schedule a meeting before the 30th. If it's a matter of, oh, it's all resolved, purchasing can confirm, they did that matter already, or it's through some cooperative agreement, you know, whatever it satisfies the legal requirements. I'm so sorry to the vendors who have already done great work for the city, and we look forward to further great work to be done. We just, as the legislative branch, have to make sure that they've, the executive branch has done what they're required to do. And I don't know that as I sit here, that they might not have verified that. So the motion is postponed, and a date has not been made certain, which gives us the opportunity, if we need to, we can pull it for a special meeting. Any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, hearing nothing further. A motion to postpone on the resolution, roll call, Clerk Codley.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
All right, thank you. That motion carries. And again, to the administration, we welcome clarifying information that may confirm that we're in a position to move that quicker and not have to make that delay further. All right, we're at discussions. Number 10, Councilwoman James requested that we have just a status update on community benefits ordinance consideration, next steps. I included that as a communication update as well. But Pro Tem, do you want to give any synopsis or summary?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Actually, tomorrow, we should have a draft form of this ordinance, myself, Councilwoman Jones, as well as the staff, as well as our attorney. And we did have some feedback in the last couple of weeks from a few community members. But we really wanted to get a first step and just see a draft form of what it would look like. We also had an opportunity to look at various community benefit ordinance throughout the area. So our first step was this week is that looking at a draft form that we should have tomorrow or Thursday. So once that's drafted for, I don't have a problem with taking it through subcommittees as well as doing more community outreach to get more feedback from our community in that process.
Okay. Further conversation on that?
Will the draft form be shared with council?
Yes, I could share it with council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Just on another quick note, we will also be having a meeting that is this Friday to, you know, check in and have time to review this draft version that will come in tomorrow. So on Friday, the group, which included Pro Tem Carrington, myself, attorneys, manager younger, we're going to meet on Friday afternoon, I'm quite sure. You know, if you're interested in joining, we can share that information with you as well, Councilwoman James and other council members.
Okay. No more than three. All right. Any final discussion? Hearing none. We're at the next discussion, Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, known by the acronym of ICE, in the city of Pontiac, and the question of Flock cameras. Councilman Goodman, you moved to add this discussion. You have the floor.
Thank you. So it has been no secret to anyone in the community or on council that it has been a very difficult time for our migrant neighbors in the city of Pontiac. There have been an endless number of raids that have happened, ripping families apart, including one that you heard tonight from a Pontiac resident. And I, at this moment, don't know how to assist by implore that the city, including my council colleagues and the administration, do something more to help protect our residents. Since the last time that we attempted to do something, it was vetoed. However, I do want to call attention to a very specific thing that has been causing concern for me as it relates to Immigration and Customs Enforcement. So a couple of years ago, we as council voted to approve a contract with Flock for the license plate readers that have been installed around the city. And to make a long bit of information short, across the country, there have been multiple instances of Flock or other license plate reading companies, A, collecting a bunch of information that they say is not personally identifiable, however, it is pulled together and cross-referenced in a way in which allows different entities, in this case being Immigration Customs Enforcement and other federal enforcement agencies, to get access to the information that is in the Oakland County Sheriff's Department Flock that they are using to do immigration enforcement actions potentially in the city of Pontiac. That has happened in other cities throughout the country. There have been multiple stories about it. And so to cut through all of that information, I have a set of questions that I officially want to put on record and have submitted to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department as it relates to the license plate reader cameras. So I'll read those and then also at some point send them over to council and the administration. So the first question is, which agencies are currently sharing their ALPR or license plate reader feed with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department? Which agencies is Oakland County Sheriff's Department sharing its license plate reader feed with? Who is the Sheriff's Department sharing its hot list with? Who is sharing its hot list with the Sheriff's Department? To get a log of all instances when data has been shared, including timestamps, and the recipient agency. A complete history of all searches conducted by outside agencies since the cameras were installed, not limited to just the past 30 days. recipient agency. A complete history of all searches conducted by outside agencies since the cameras were installed, not limited to just the past 30 days, especially the reason for why the search was done, the name of the agency, available details about the searching officer, number of hits returned, and available details about the matched image excluding license plate numbers. Share any instance in which local license plate reader data matched an item on the national hot list along with where that data was sent. Where can the city elected, as well as potentially the community, view the contents and criteria of the national hot list? Listing the ongoing automatic alert lists that are currently in use. A log of all the users who have searched the system, including timestamps and user information, and listing all the searches performed by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department on behalf of other agencies since the start of our contract with them and Flock, or instances where outside agencies were granted one-time access to perform a search with the Flock information. I know that was a lot, but I wanted to make sure that the entire community could hear that. And again, I will be submitting all of these to council and the administration to pass on to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, so we can hopefully get answers surrounding this. Because I do want to do everything that I can to protect our community, and when, and I'm not just speaking out of hyperbole, there have been multiple situations across the country where Flock data has been used by ICE to do immigration enforcement. And so while that is a reality in different parts of our country, and we are dealing with raids actively in our community, I do have concerns. And not only do I have these concerns, there are multiple electeds, both from the state level to even the county, who have reached out to me personally, asking, and actually want answers to these same questions that I'm asking. So again, look forward to hearing back from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, and we'll work with council leadership and the administration to get those answers.
Further discussion on this topic?
I think I did just have the question.
Councilman Parker.
Because I believe earlier this, during this year, we talked about a sensitive location ordinance. And I believe, understand that there may have even been a raid, ICE raid at some of the schools in the area today, and some parents was taken. So are we revisiting that thought process? I think it was, we talked about it earlier this year, but I can't remember what date.
That has not been invoked in the full city council meetings. I'm not sure, maybe at a subcommittee meeting. But I'm not personally familiar, and there isn't a sensitive locations ordinance draft that, that has come to council leadership for potential scheduling.
Thank you.
But I welcome if, if there's another example or another community where we can review and consider.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this topic? So Councilman Goodman, if you can get those questions, so we can get those answer requests submitted. Hear anything further? All right, we're at number 12, discussion, the city's capital improvement plan, next steps from the administration. Councilwoman James, you requested, you have the floor if you want to give a synopsis.
Yes, just wanted to touch base with administration on this topic. We were told that the plan was that this capital improvement plan would be finalized by the end of the year. And so my question is, are we on target to see the capital improvement plan finalized by the end of the year?
We are in fact on target, and you should have received a first draft of the plan that has just the known infrastructure projects. Did you receive that?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So we are on target.
We are on target. So that will be, can we make sure that that gets added in since all of our meetings are now, President McGinnis already scheduled through the end of the year? Could we make sure that that gets on the agenda for one of the last meetings of the year?
I mean, we can bring that to you.
Whoever can, whoever can answer.
I am not a magician. I cannot pull out of a magic hat if they don't have it ready. Whenever they have it ready, we will absolutely give it real estate on the council agenda, and I hope it's actually ready.
Well, you've heard, you've heard the answer, that they are on track. So we can assume that, you know, somewhere in December, we should be able to review or to take a look at that.
The council agenda inclusion is very inclusive. We are willing to take up items that they contend are ready for prime time, doesn't mean that their contention meets reality. But yes, any meeting, any meeting, we can do it. Any further discussion on the topic? Yep, so we have, the meetings in December are the 2nd and the 16th, although more can be added. So both of those are brought up. Okay, that concludes discussions.
I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Councilman Goodman has a motion to suspend the rules. Please state what you're proposing, which rules be suspended.
You're asking me which rules need to be suspended?
Yes.
Huh? Oh.
What do you want to accomplish?
Ah, thank you. Because it's, I really do this. So I'm suspending, suspending the rules just so that council can receive. We will not be discussing tonight. We will not be debating tonight, just so that members of council and the public have ample time to be able to look at this and be able to make adjustments and opinions known. So I would like to suspend the rules to bring four different ordinance languages. Again, we're not discussing them tonight, just so that we have time to look at them and research.
Okay. So Councilman Goodman is moving to propose, he's proposing to suspend the rules in order to bring up items not currently on the approved agenda. Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Jones. This is about suspending the rules to take up new items on the agenda. Everyone clear on the rules that are being proposed to be suspended? Should you vote? All right, roll call, Clerk Hoadley on the motion to suspend the rules.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays.
Okay. That motion carries, so you are in order to make motions for resolutions for first reading. That's what you've got for ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the first one, and so I should hand this as a pack?
Yes.
To each council person?
One of information. I just want to make sure I got this right. So these are ordinances that we want to discuss tonight, and the, because it's one area that I got a problem with. And so I just want to make sure we know what we're doing if we're going to discuss this on the floor openly. Because, because, because if you're making a motion for us to have it, suspend the rules to bring it up for discussion, we have to discuss it, correct?
So if I understand Councilman Goodman's vantage point correctly, he just wants to hand these off.
I just want to make sure, because one, I don't feel comfortable with even this.
So...
Hold on. Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, so.
The rules have already been suspended.
Okay.
A council member can introduce items not already on the agenda. So make your first motion on your first resolution for a first hearing, and then we could postpone it from there.
Thank you. I had to make a motion to have a first reading for the residential tenants' right to privacy.
Is there a, it's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones. So that's now before us, a resolution for a first reading. Do you want to entertain a motion to postpone it?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Goodman now moves to postpone it, so that way council members actually have time to research and review. For context, Councilman Goodman has made a request many months ago for a drafting of ordinance language to be considered. And when that wasn't going, getting very far with the city attorney, he brought resolutions explicitly asking the city's attorneys for assistance in ensuring that resolution be drafted. Council adopted that at the beginning of June, and there still has been no drafting by city's attorneys. So he's trying to, in absence of that, fill the vacuum and start the discussion and prompt the attorneys to say, okay, here's draft language, now review that for legal confirmation. So he wants to not just say, okay, I guess the city attorneys have pocket vetoed it, well, won't consider anything. He's trying to come up with other ways to get it into council consideration.
Support on the motion to postpone.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones, that we postpone this first reading without actually voting on it. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, we'll bring it back at the next regular city council meeting for a first reading. And it gives three weeks for the city attorney to maybe sink their teeth into it. Roll call on the motion to postpone, Clerk Hoadley.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, it's postponed. The rules are still suspended. Councilman Goodman, I gather you have another resolution for a first reading ordinance draft.
I do. Can I, I'm gonna make a motion for a first reading for the declawing and de vocalization prohibition.
Is there a second?
Support.
Was that Councilman Jones? So it's moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones for that ordinance first reading. Is there a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones. This would be able to come up for a first reading in three weeks' time. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing none, roll call, Clerk Hoadley.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That postponement motion carries, so now we, are there any others?
Yes, there are. There's, there's two more, including the one that I'm on.
Okay.
That have a motion, well, they can make a motion to introduce the just cause... Just cause eviction ordinance for a first reading.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones, to introduce a first reading, resolution or, for a first reading of an ordinance. Is there a motion to suspend it? Or, excuse me, to postpone it?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, Councilman Goodman moves to postpone to the next city council meeting. Councilman Jones moves to second that postponement motion. Any clarity or discussion on postponement? Hearing none, roll call, Clerk Hoadley.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is postponed to the next city council meeting. And it sounds like your final one?
Yes.
Please move.
A motion for the first reading of the ordinance regarding early lease renewals and right to renew.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones, for that resolution for a first reading of an ordinance amendment. So that motion is before us. Would you like to postpone it?
Yes, I would.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Jones, to postpone to the next city council meeting for that resolution for a first reading. Hearing no discussion further on postponement, roll call, Clerk Hoadley.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
All right. That postponement motion carries. Are there any other motions to take up items of business that not already on the agenda? Hearing no further proposals from council members, the suspension of the rules concludes. We're back to regular order. We are at subcommittee reports, providing updates on those city council actions and areas for research and review. First is communications engagement operations. Councilman Goodman, anything?
No, we did not meet in the month of August. The next meeting will be the 26th.
Of this month?
Yes.
Okay. No, you're good. And then for the community's benefit, you may not know, but the city's communications director has resigned, and the city's information technology manager has resigned. So both of those positions are vacant. In closing comments, the mayor is welcome to, if he's got any updates on those human resources changes, but those both directly impact communications engagement operation capacity for the city. Next, economic development, housing and planning. Madam Chair, Councilman Jones.
Okay, because this subcommittee meeting occurs at the beginning of the month, we have already met for September. I understand that this update includes points discussed on August 4th. We did not have quorum at that subcommittee meeting, but I do want to bring up a point shared yesterday. The city does have a new planning manager. Her name is Amy Bavin. Her first day was, was yesterday, September 8th. So welcome to Amy Bavin, who's not here right now, but nonetheless, I have met with her, and she was at this subcommittee meeting yesterday. But going back to August 4th, which is the purpose of this review, again, we did not have quorum, but as an update for notes, at that time, the Clemis training, training for Clemis was to commence in two to three weeks at the end of August, which, you know, would be now, the beginning of installing systems in vehicles, tablet systems, to expedite citations was to commence. Excuse me. We also received updates from code enforcement regarding code violations. I also want to mention that grass violations will continue through the end of October. So that's a housekeeping note for the community to keep in mind. Please cut your grass through the end of October. I also want to mention there were some updates regarding the site plan review for 31 Judson, which we have discussed in meetings since that time, but again, this is from the August 4th meeting. We also received a request for public comment and an update on the county's demolition efforts, which we all know is ahead of schedule. And I do want to mention that the next economic development, housing and planning meeting will be on October 6th, 2025, at 9:00 AM in the city council conference room. Thank you, President McGinnis.
Thank you. We're gonna jump to Pro Tem Carrington for public safety, health and wellness, and then revert back.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Public Safety and Emergency Services report. We met in July. Just some of the police activity that was reported. Assaults were up from June to July. Breaking and entering went slightly up. CSC was slightly up. Homicides, we had no change, only had one homicide between the two months. Miscellaneous destruction of property, we had less occurrences, and we just had one more robbery from, from, from June to July. Discharged firearm incidents in July, we had two with injuries, six without injury. In June, we had one, one injuries and three without injuries. The Waterford Regional Fire Department also submitted written July reports. Those reports have been sent to council. The Star EMS, July 2025 reports, total responses was 1,121, on scene, so 1,094 responses. Other notes, GBI discussions were ongoing, and a better understanding was gained of prospective roles and responsibility. We are still waiting on the mayor's office to complete our request for additional information. So we submitted several questions to the administration office, so we can share out with council and share out with the community. Statement on youth violence in Pontiac. Overall, violence in Pontiac is down, but we cannot ignore the challenges our youth are still facing. Too many young people remain at risk, and urgency to act is real. We must do more to provide safe spaces, resources and opportunities that steer our youth towards brighter futures. As we work to address these issues, one thing is clear, we cannot afford to fight each other, and fighting a vision would only slow our progress. Our focus must be on unity and solutions, not blame. The safety and success of Pontiac's young people depends on us coming together, acting with urgency, and refusing to accept anything less than real and lasting change. And I conclude. And I conclude my report. President McGinnis.
Okay. Facilities and property subcommittee?
Point of information, Mr. President?
Okay.
My understanding is that the deputy mayor did send information regarding the GBI program?
Yes, he sent some questions, but all questions weren't answered.
Okay. Let me know what questions you don't believe were answered and we'll make sure we answer.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford, anything you'd like to share for facilities and property?
Unfortunately, we couldn't have one. We had several major deaths in my district, so I had to cancel the meeting because I was trying to help get people's families buried and making sure they have the money to bury their families, so we didn't have the meeting. But we'll have one next one and I'll give you a report. Thank you for understanding. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Finance and personnel. I chaired that subcommittee. We had our meeting on August 14th. The next subcommittee meeting for finance and personnel is this Thursday, 2:00 p.m. This Thursday, September 11th, 2:00 p.m. in the council conference room that is open to the public. At that meeting, we reviewed the financial statements, including the monthly consolidated bank statement, sweep bank statement, bank reconciliation cash summary by funds, year-to-date payroll summary and accounts payable number of days to pay analysis. The administration continues to work that number down, so it's a much quicker turn time, but we're monitoring that to ensure it continues to move in a right direction. And we also did a closer review of legal expenses, summary and detail for the fiscal year. The purchasing manager for the city of Pontiac, a new purchasing manager started on August 26th and a new city treasurer started yesterday. So those two finance-related positions are now filled. They reported last month that they are beginning to look at the income tax division and the administration of that. We saw tonight some more information about that and that this finance and personnel subcommittee will look more in depth about that proposal and review the pros and cons and if it's a right fit for the city operations. So as a quick summary, that's where we're at and we will revisit those matters at this second Thursday of the month, 2:00 p.m. for finance and personnel. Now, we're at Law and the Courts. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, President. The Law and the Courts did not meet in August. Our next meeting will be October 27th of this year at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. Parks, Recreation and Public Works, Chairwoman James?
Yes. The Parks, Recreation, Public Works meeting was held Friday, August 15th. Some of the top issues were, as for those of you who didn't hear, President McGinnis' update on the Martin Luther King Bridge. Again, the demolition and construction work go out for bid on Wednesday, October 13th. The construction engineer, the person who would supervise the construction in the field will be selected by September 23rd and the demolition and construction contractor will be selected by the end of September. We expect the pre-construction meeting to be held by early October and demolition to follow soon after. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan update, the master plan will expire at the end of this year. We are on track to have a new one updated and approved by February of 2026. With the new approved master plan, the park deficit issue closed. The city will be able to once again receive grant funding from the state of Michigan for park development and park upgrades. David Ewalt demolition is waiting on state of Michigan environmental approvals. Apparently, that facility comes under the historic guidelines and so they are waiting for the approvals from the environmental and historic groups at the state to be able to go ahead with that demolition. And it was stated in the meeting that it's... Sometimes those approvals can be lengthy in terms of, you know, getting the results back from them. So we have no idea when exactly we will be able to get those results. Speed cushions are now being installed throughout the city. You can contact your local, your district council person. I'm not going to read all of the list of streets that will be receiving speed humps in the next couple of weeks, but please reach out to your council person if you have a question about those. Streetlight conversion to LED is ongoing. Pontiac has a total of 77 DTE lights and 1,092 lights that the city has responsibility for. If you've got outage on your street and you don't know whether it's DTE or whether it's city, please call your council person or call the DTE or call the DPW office. I think there was some discussion in our meeting about making it easier for residents to be able to know whether the light on their street is DTE, is controlled by DTE or the city of Pontiac. So more on that. And I think that's all we have for tonight.
Okay. That concludes subcommittee reports. This is another opportunity for the administration. Before we go into closing comments, if you have clarity from your Parks and Recreation Department or your Finance Department in terms of satisfying of the legal requirements with the contract for 3D printing for recreation courses, do you have a verdict on that that would allow it to be brought up before the meeting concludes?
We do not. Our city attorney has reached out to the purchasing division to try to get a definitive answer and has not received an answer. And so we do not have definitive clarity on that. It is the job of the department directors to verify that it's gone through the proper purchasing procedure, but we don't have clarity.
Okay. We'll move into closing comments. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
We do have a vacancy in the IT manager position and the IT manager has left to start his own business. We received word of that about a month ago now. That position is likely to be challenging to fill because it's a highly technical position. We do have two other IT people on staff and so we'll continue to be able to update the website and maintain IT operations. The communications director is left for another position. She provided notice to us about two and a half weeks ago and departed Friday. And so both of those positions are open. And if people are interested or know anyone who's interested, we encourage them to apply so we can get those positions filled. They've both been posted online.
Deputy Mayor? Chief Assistant, Clerk Hodley. All right. Thank you for pitch hitting tonight. Thank you for your hours this evening. All right. Council members, your closing comments. Councilman Parker?
Just want to remind everybody about the District 5 meeting Thursday, the 11th of September at 5:00 p.m. in the Shrine Room. Look forward to seeing you there. Have a great evening.
All right. Councilman James?
Okay. I've got a couple of announcements tonight. First of all, the city of Pontiac or the city council is working with the House of Angels Director Delania Stevens, the sponsor of the Domestic Violence Summit at the Ruth Peterson Senior Center. This will take place on Saturday, October 4th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I want to, we want to invite community leaders, advocates, the service providers and really anyone who is interested in possibly learning more about what we can do to improve this growing problem of domestic violence against women. Again, that is the Domestic Violence Awareness Summit that's taking place Saturday, October 4th, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. at the Ruth Peterson Center. The Urban Conservation Fund will hold their annual peer exchange here in the city of Pontiac on, from September 17th to the 19th. They will be gathering at the Auburn Hills Marriott. They're expecting about 100 guests to be a part of that peer exchange. These are folks from all over the country that are working on various urban conservation projects. They are coming to Pontiac to be able to look at the Webster School Community Project. So that will be one of the projects that they will be, that group will be visiting Webster School and they will also be looking at the Columbia Avenue Neighborhood Greenway Site where we, Friends of Pontiac Parks, have written a grant to try and get a greenway from where Columbia Avenue dead ends out to Telegraph where residents would be able to ride their bikes or walk into the new Pontiac Oaks Park. Again, that exchange takes place September 17th through the 19th here in the city of Pontiac. The next Parks and Rec Public Works Subcommittee meeting is this Friday, September 19th from, or it's next Friday, September 19th from 12:00 noon in the Legislative Conference Room. And the District 4 Community Council meeting will take place on Thursday evening, September 25th at 6:00 p.m. and all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
Thank you. I mean, very quickly, I want to just reiterate the fact that it is very difficult for myself and many others to watch this community continue to be terrorized on, like, without end by the federal government. And again, I hope that we find something to be able to do, to actually be able to defend and help people. That way, students, when they are at school, are not able to look out of a window and look down Sanderson Avenue and see a caravan of cars detaining a singular individual. So, separate of that, I hope that my answers, my questions, again, once I submit them, get answered by the sheriff's department. Again, very quickly, just want to highlight the two things that are happening before the next council meeting, which will be the teachers' rally for the Pontiac Teachers Union and for our students and for our schools, which is happening this Friday in the Pike Room at the Crowfoot at 5:00 p.m. That's when doors open. So please come out. It's free and available to anyone. If you love our students, if you love our schools, if you support our teachers, come out. The other thing is, again, the Pullover Prevention Clinic, which the flyer is in both English and Espanol, when you see it in the community. Again, it is happening September 21st from 2:00 to 6:00. So it's an hour shift than it normally is. And it's happening at Grace and Peace Community Church, not the Baldwin Center. Grace and Peace Community Church, which is 451 West Kennet, is directly across from Alcott and North Hope Arms. We're providing the same things as always, you know, lights, fluid checks, AC recharges, you know, trying to minimize interactions with law enforcement by anyone and everyone who can make it. So again, you don't have to be a Pontiac resident. If you can make it and you hear about it or someone told you about it, please come. And again, you will see flyers throughout the community. If you have any questions, my number to contact would be my council office number, which is 248-758-3015, or email me at mgoodman@pontiac.mi.us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Jones?
I am also extremely disheartened by the reports of Pontiac residents being targeted, Hispanic residents in our city. And I especially sympathize and with the brave, courageous young woman who came and spoke to us at public comment. My prayers are with her and everyone else who is experiencing that kind of harassment right now, in and out of our community. I also want to mention, this is going, I want to mention that the Lifesaver Lab is going on right now. This is a comprehensive training that provides all participants, Pontiac residents, with the skills, training and preparation needed to save a life. This is free to Pontiac residents. I will also invite city staff to join if any are interested. Residents have the option to sign up for CPR and AED training for child, infant and adult. That includes EpiPen training. It includes choking maneuvers and comes with a skills pack that you will need to respond in an emergency. Also, in this Lifesaver Lab round, residents have the opportunity to sign up for the AVERT Courses. That stands for Active, well, Active Violence Emergency Response Training, which includes also bleeding control, tourniquet use and other emergency preparedness training that I hope you don't need, but you can never be too prepared, especially in times of uncertainty, which are unfortunately impending upon our community. So I encourage residents to please check social media, contact me. I can send you the flyer, help you get registered. The next Active Violence Emergency Response Training class is this Thursday, September 11th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. That will take place at Oak Street Health, which is in District 2. And thank you to the management team over at Oak Street for letting us use that space. This is done in collaboration with Denise Harris, CEO of Healing Heart Safety Services. And again, the next class is this Thursday. There are other classes available for Active Violence Emergency Response Training and CPR and first aid certification. Please just contact me or Denise. Both of our contact information is on the flyer. Either one of us will help you get registered and we look forward to seeing you. One of Denise's missions is to make Pontiac a heart, a heart, healthy, heart-safe community. That's a heart-safe community. And that mission really resonates with me, especially during times of opioid crisis, mental health crisis and other things that are going on in our community. So the Lifesaver Lab currently open. There are still spots available. I encourage city council members, city staff and Pontiac residents to take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can have a disagreement without being disrespectful. All night I have been accused of not putting District 1 first, that I didn't listen to the residents in my role as councilwoman. I remember when I met with M1 and I advocated for them to change the amount of fines when they use it. I put District 1 first. When I negotiated for the times to change from 7:00 a.m. to now 9:00 to 8:00, I put District 1 first. When I said that they can no longer use the street howling, howling and they had to line up on Woodward, I put District 1 first. To say I don't disrespect, that I don't respect District 1 is a personal attack on my integrity. When District 1 people can't afford their bills, they call me. I put District 1 people first. When people can't afford to bury their family members, I'm there because I put District 1 people first. When people, residents say they need their roads repaired, their roofs done, they need food, they need clothes, they need anything that I can readily do, I put District 1 first. To say that I am not dedicated, to even question that I am not dedicated to District 1 is inhumane, is unkind. Despite these personal attacks, I still show up. Despite the fact that even today I lost a family member, I'm still here. Despite the fact that I've had health challenges, I'm still here because I put District 1 first. This is silly season. It's election season. It's get back. It's people who they ain't never liked me before ain't going to like me now because I don't fit in their box because I don't compromise and if I say that is, it is what it is with me. To attack another black woman because she chose to do something differently is inhumane and disrespectful. But I wonder, when those individuals were in positions of leadership, did they remember the decisions that they had to make that put this city in harm's way? Everybody gets silent then, but I've been here for 46 years. I remember everyone when they served on the school board. I remember when they were chief engineers. And it's appalling to me that we are going to allow a disagreement for us to start being disrespectful. I've had my moments where I've allowed my emotions to get the best of me, even tonight, knowing that I'm checking on my rep, my immediate family, making sure they're okay because I'm trying to do the best I can do because in my family, I'm a leader. In this community, I'm a leader because I put people first before myself. In this community, I'm a leader because I put people first before myself. We can disagree without being disrespectful. We can disagree without taking jabs, personal attacks on people because you don't know what anybody's going through. And rather get emotional, I'm going to say, I still love you. And I get it, you're upset about a vote, but when we start attacking people persons, it's a problem for me because when I do it, I'm public enemy number one. But it's funny how when others take their opportunities with that three minutes on that mic, that it becomes okay and it's acceptable. Don't ask me to change my behavior when your behavior displays exactly what people don't want in this community. You cannot like what a person does without being disrespectful to them. You can make your he's and holds and all your little comments. At the end of the day, I'm here to serve the district I love, District 1. We have a meeting on September 27th, it's from 3:00 to 5:00. It's at 46 North Saginaw, the Picasso. To the Reed family, I say, I bring you greetings. To the Den, to Brian Denham family, a pastor in this community, dear friend, family member, I bring condolences to you. To the Russell family, who just lost their matriarch, condolences to you. Everybody in my district, we've had, we've been hit the most this summer, one of the highest amount of members that live in our district have passed on and I just keep telling y'all that God is still God and He reigns on all of us. I ask that you keep us in prayer because when election season starts, you will hear the worst about everybody, but I want you to look at everything you see out here. If a person's walk does not align with they talk, they just talking to me. God bless you, God keep you. And again, to my family, my condolences. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, representing District 7 on the East Side on the City Council. I want to thank our neighbors. We had a very strong showing at last night's monthly District 7 East Side Community Meeting. That next meeting is on Monday, October 13th. We have three final meetings of the year as District 7. And so all are welcome, all are invited. And over these last nearly four years, we have had a meeting every month. We have had consistent, high, strong participation and I want to thank our neighbors for making that possible. Everyone is welcome. Everyone is welcome. No one has been turned away ever at any of our District 7 meetings and I think that the results speak for themselves in terms of the very high engagement that we've been able to organize and facilitate. So thank you to my neighbors that have done that. You've put your time out there to help make our neighborhood and our side of town stronger. We covered a lot of topics. One of the big ones for our side of town is Auburn Avenue Construction. So as I've said it month after month at those meetings and we fielded a lot of questions, but the road will never be completely closed to traffic. You can always get through on Auburn. And it goes from the Artis formerly known as the Phoenix Center all the way to Opdyke Road. That whole stretch of Auburn is getting redone. They are working now through the beginning of, through November. So when November and the temperature change comes, they will stop and then come back in the spring. Again, you will still be able to traverse, they're just shifting lanes as they go. So if you have specific action or what it involves, feel free to reach out to me or if you want specifics on the timeline, I shared that last night, but I can get that to you as well. Again, that's Auburn Avenue Construction. You heard already tonight a lot about the MLK Bridge construction process. We're going to try to, when we've got those contractors giving us exact dates, make sure that we repeat that, repeat that, get that information out so that way everyone can have a frame of reference, especially those that live close by, because that will obviously be temporary disruption with the demolition, as we've seen with the Phoenix Center and that major concrete coming down. We have, on MLK, we have, the road is much smoother, much nicer, including Featherstone in front of White Castle. There are light improvements that are underway and council voted at the previous meetings last month, so that way the full light all the way from Perry to South Boulevard, that those can be modernized, upgraded and consistently well lit, which will be a big quality of life improvement on MLK. For the sake of time, I'll leave it there further. Thank you, everyone who provided feedback and was here tonight or following along. Our next city council meeting, that's scheduled at least, is September 30th. And I want to apologize again to the vendor, to the staff and the residents and the council that an item wasn't perhaps not ready when it came to the recreation proposal. And I'm going to be really bummed if we find out that they actually had it in place and covered and met that requirement. And if we just had that information, we could have put it to bed and allowed it to vote, but we've got to follow the ordinances, we've got to ensure that those laws are upheld. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Jones. Do we adjourn this evening's meeting? Hearing no discussion. Roll call, Clerk Hodley.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Six yeas, no nays.
The motion carries. The adjournment is at 10:37 p.m. Please be safe until we meet again. Ms. Jones? Ms. Charlotte Jones?